All right, it's nine oh two, we're gonna call this board meeting.
What's that? You got a chair?
Yeah.
He's hiding in the corner.
How y'all doing? Good morning.
Mr. Brad, you're just in time.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. Daddy Father, we thank you this morning, oh God, for allowing us to see another day. Father, we just thank you for this board meeting. And Father, we just continue to pray, oh God, that you lift our elected officials. Father, keep them from hurting former dangers. And Father, we just ask, oh God, that you instill the will and the power, and there'll be this in them, oh God, that they may run this county and the city business. Father, we pray for the city, we pray for this county, we pray for the state, and we pray for this country, oh God. Father, we pray for our first responders, our schoolteachers, our nurses, our doctors. Father, continue to keep them safe, oh God. And Father, we just pray for the finances of this county and the businesses, oh God. And Father, we ask, oh God, that you allow new businesses to come to this area, oh God. And Father, we just pray for peace throughout the cities. And we want to pray for loved ones that may have lost anybody over the last two weeks. Father, continue to give their families comfort. And Father, we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Okay, we got some ladies and gentlemen from cathedral that are gonna do the pledge of allegiance for us. Is it okay if we follow along? Okay. Face the flag. Whenever y'all ready.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You don't mind? All right, this is a certificate of appreciation for the... Each one of y'all, and the first one is Sam House.
Sam.
Is it Samuel? Thank you, Sam. Is it Malachi? Is that right? Thank you. And Mr. Noah Johnson? Hey Noah, thank you. Mary Thomas Edwards? Thank you. Appreciate y'all doing a good job. Y'all hold up right here with a decent celebration picture. Don't wanna go around. What grade are y'all in? All three of y'all are seven ready? Okay, count three. One, two, three. Got it?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna do a real roll call. Mr. Graves. Miss Sutcliffe. Mr. Gaines.
Yeah.
Mr. Middleton.
Present.
Paige Dean.
Present.
Randy Lewis.
Present.
Josh Lower. Ms. Washington. And I am here, all present. Need a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by... Second. Second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? If... I'm sorry, I'm a new veteran.
Dealing with the granting... Conversation is just a part of the minutes. And it's no discussion, so in the near future, when individuals have a problem or whatever, part of the discussion needs to be part of the minutes.
And what was that on?
Middleton, Grant. Oh, and Scott. Paige, just the ex-Scott, about the... You want me to ask? We live after daily for the supervisor and inspector roads. And I'm just concerned about the terminology they say. Supervisor and inspector roads and the bridges and the his or her respective district. We inspect all of the roads, not just the road in our business. Is that correct? Nah, this is all... This just was part of the minutes.
Yeah, believe me, you gotta drive all of the...
You gotta do all of them.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Any names? Eyes have it, motion approved. Need a motion approved docket? Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
Unless President, all discussion I have is with Lambert County. It was just the last time he gonna be on this docket.
What's that?
You wanna know if Lambert and Soling, is this the last time he'd be on the docket? Or is he gonna be on there tomorrow? You're still dealing with him, sir?
Yes, he has, I finished him in a six hour session.
He may or may not have finished with that taxi. He sent an email to Terrence, so it may be done with that. It may not. But that's... Terrence said not yet. Yeah, probably is his last one, but it's less... That's definitely... And supervisor Gray, the... You're right, every supervisor, you have to inspect all the cameras and everything.
Has the port submitted all their documents for tax for 2023?
The auditor said that we should receive clearance from the state within thirty days. They said it would be a fair estimate.
Okay, but they had turned on all of it, everything, because they were really weighing on it. Okay, all in favor? Any names? Eyes have it, motion approved. We need a motion to approve financial monthly financial reports to Adams County Sheriff's Office. We're gonna do them all together, we gotta do them together. Okay, Adams County Sheriff's Office, Chancellor of Clerk, and the purchasing department for...
No motion.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion?
I just have a good discussion. In the process of approving this, I mean, I've come from all these conferences, and when you speak to your minutes, I really don't even know what I'm approving. So, in the near future, I think we're gonna have to do better than this, because if I'm gonna be held accountable for what I approved, then I need to know what I'm approving.
No, I know on purchasing. I don't know if anybody here from purchasing, so... Are we getting these reports? Because I see you be sending us some from the purchase report, the financial report for the proof of credit card, for the debt department and all that.
That's separate.
Yeah, that's a separate report.
He brought up a good point. Who sold this to Brandy to you? Y'all go through it, it's checked two or three times before it comes for us to approve. Is that correct?
Well, maybe we just need to sort of get a copy of it.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Eyes have it. I heard no names. Okay, special presentations, if any? Got any special presentations? All right, county business. Courtney Ferguson, follow-up on fire? Okay. I'm gonna skip, I'm gonna do these other three, and then y'all can talk about this next one. Joseph Hurd.
Sorry, I'm late. I was trying to get something printed, but I can submit it to you after we talk.
We got two or three more, if you wanna keep something printed and...
Yeah, if we could, we're having a little trouble with getting emails to format. It'd be better if we had had something in front of it.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, let's...
Okay, we'll call you back up in a minute.
Okay, great, thank you.
Judy Woodford from Santa Creek Community? All right, you wanna come to the podium, or get both y'all, or whoever wants to speak? Or could she do it from right there, y'all have a problem?
She needs to stand before the podium so that...
Okay.
Sir, I would like... We got a bunch from here, from this Santa Creek. And I like them to each speak, because we have some that live back there where he cannot get... Like her, she cannot get back to her home. Mr. Steve cannot get back to his home because of the roads and stuff. I like them to each have their three minutes of whatever. It kind of, y'all don't understand what we're dealing with.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Holly Beaver, I live in Santa Creek Estates. For two years, we have called Army Corps of Engineers, Supervisor's Office, Forestry Service, anyone we could possibly get help with this creek that is eating into our road. The county took care of this road for twenty-five to thirty years. They did all the upkeep on this road for twenty-five to thirty years. Then all of a sudden, somehow, I don't know if it actually is or not, but it was discovered that it was a private road, and they stopped maintaining it. Since then, the creek has, from what I was told from the old timers there, you used to be able to walk across this creek. Now this creek is probably about a hundred feet wide and probably about thirty feet deep. It has steadily, for the last two years, been eating into our road. This past storm, it got so bad that it's, the road is almost completely gone now. And our water line now has been reconfigured to sit on top of the road so that we can all at least have water back there. And I think there's been a misunderstanding as to what we are asking for. We are not asking, we understand that if y'all say it's a county road, that it, I mean, public, private road, then it is a private road. We're not asking the county to maintain this road. Not gonna pretend to speak for everyone, but as far as I'm concerned, people outside spoke to our concern. We're not asking y'all to maintain this road. We're asking for something be done about this creek so that we can still get into our homes. There are over a hundred properties back there. All of us pay property taxes, every one of us. We cannot get emergency services? We can't get our trash picked up, because everything that we need, Adams County tells us it's the job of Franklin County to take care of. Franklin County says, "No, we don't take care of that, you're Adams County." We're like the stepchildren that have been forgotten about out there. And all we've asked, for the hundreds of thousands of dollars that y'all have gotten over the years from our property taxes, from us spending our money in this county, is to fix a creek that we can get to our homes. That's all we're asking. But I'm constantly being told, "Where's the money gonna come from?" Well, what are you using our taxes for? Y'all had to collect the taxes from us for years. We get no services out there. Y'all don't do anything with the roads out there. Where does our money go? All we need is some help. That's all we ask for. Thank you.
Ma'am, are these your pictures?
And I didn't take one picture, one picture I forgot to get. There is a major high line back on the back of that property, where Mr. Steve's property, that you had to cross that area to try to get to. The electrical company cannot get back there. We can't get our mail. We can't get anything. I had to park my vehicle at his house, which is way down the road from my house, and get on an ATV to get to my home.
I understand you, White, and this is... Originally, this was supposed to be like they're selling hump camps, I think, at one time. Now, this is back thirty...
Right, and I understand that there's...
Is that correct?
We got residents now.
Okay.
I understand that, but the hunters back there, they own their property as well. And they also, even though they don't live here full-time, they also pay property taxes on the property that they own. And they should be able, they should be able to get to their property as well. It shouldn't matter if they live here as full-time residents or not. They own property back there, they pay property taxes on that property.
Okay, Riley, I know you can address this.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I want to say, clear up any questions, anybody else have?
I spoke with Chevrolet's residence, my secretary spoke with them. Spoke with those two ladies Thursday. They came by the office Thursday, they left them down here, come by the office, I spoke with them. Told them I was gonna bring them forward to board today, told them I was gonna try to come out tomorrow, take some pictures. I had spoke with the attorney, me and Mr. Lower spoke. We're gonna bring them forward to board today, and I report, you know, see if the county would allow us to try to submit it as an EWP, to try to help with the problem there. It is a private road. I spoke with Southwest, I spoke with Brett Nevis Friday, twice about this. He sent me some information on it, just to present to the board. Since January twenty-three, they've been out there over twenty times, with power outs and things. And now it's getting where they can't get back there to. He sent me a mouth saying, "So, thirty residents has their washout." So, I do have this from Southwest. But like I said, our only thing, I think, at this moment, for this level of board, what we can do since it's private is only offer maybe some assistance through EWP or any other programs out there that could help. I don't know what else to do.
I have a question, though, since the county took care of this project.
You're right on the edge of the creek, that's the problem. When he talks about EWP, let's say it probably costs just a million dollars just for... Well, they would, if we got it approved for EWP, it'd be a two-hundred thousand dollars somebody would have to put into it. Is that right? Is it twenty percent?
Yes, sure.
Two-hundred thousand dollars to... After they offered the million dollars, like, we're gonna have to come, somebody's gotta come up with two-hundred thousand. And it's... It's something we've been discussing, because this involves people, other people's property, and it's not actually our road. It's like, who's gonna come up with the money? We hadn't really got into a big discussion. I don't know if there's enough pool of money to get that kind of money from. But it leads us in a pretty good quandary. I know you pay for property taxes. And there's a lot of things those property taxes pay for. Is that, is it just one big washout, or are we talking about a whole five or six of them? And somebody might have to give up part of the property that's at this. Somebody's gonna have to give up some right away, because we're gonna have to lose the road. You can't fill up that much of a creek.
We talked to someone that's across the road from, from it, his name is Will.
What's your name, ma'am?
Judy Walker. I've been out there, I've lived out, I'm out there for thirty-five years. Like I said, and we talked to the guy that's across the road from where the washout is. And...
Yeah, you have to get a hoodie.
And, and like I said, we talked to you.
Come back to me when they can get you.
Shout all the way back there, look up nineteen-five ninety-two and see what that's at.
Okay, I talked to the guy that lives across the road, and he said he will not give up, you know, his property. He's only got a little small spot. He has a camp, like, right, it's eating all the way up to the camp. Okay, so like I said, and this is our water guy, he owns the water line. And he actually has our water line extending, Mr. Brandon. He has our water line extending, you'll see it.
I'll see it in a few minutes.
And that's the only way those people can get their water back there. So, and like I said, it keeps eating and eating and eating. But we have one way in and one way out now. We also have a bridge out on Deerfield Road. We had two ways, we go to Deerfield or we go Garden City Road. I didn't give you the pictures, but that whole bridge is washed out on Deerfield Road. Okay, we have one concrete bridge that is to give to us. And I didn't give you the pictures of that, but it's washing out, all the rocks are washing out from it. The creek is rerouting itself all the way completely around. You know, like, we got other places, but these, there's two that lives right, her, Holly, and Mr. Steve near, has been there a very long time. He cannot get to his camp. They're parking their vehicles way up the road and having to ride four roads to get to their camp. But we cannot have, now, right now, we have no access for fire trucks. We have no access for emergency, anything emergency. We've only had one person that they brought in, and you have to pay for that, a helicopter. His, she died, and they had to airlift her out. And we actually had to physically find a spot for a helicopter to land there. But you're supposed to pay for all that. But we have no, I've been there thirty-five years, like I said, and Garden City is y'all road. And we have to call every time for Garden City, because it's been very dire. It's a six-mile travel road to get to us. You have to come off that concrete bridge. So, it needs to be checked again, because if this concrete bridge washes complete now, we're stuck. I can't go nowhere. I won't even be able to come out. So, and like I said, I haven't gave you every picture. We tried to give, I've got some on my phone, but we didn't develop them all.
Well, we don't have all the information we need. I know Riley's probably gonna tell us about the pretty bridge. Is that the one that's...
That's it.
Yes, 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 sir. And we don't, and I would like, we're just, what I'm asking for, I know y'all maintained these roads for twenty-five years. And if there was a way you could maintain these roads, I would appreciate that with all my heart. Because y'all did do it, and then y'all found out it was private roads or whatever we said, you know? But when we bought, y'all were maintaining this road, thirty-five years. Y'all maintained them about twenty, twenty-five years.
Well, there's a pretty stringent law about us being on private property.
Yeah, I know. I understand all of that. See, I'm...
And they've started to enforce it a little harder.
And see, when, it made it so bad, too, because when we used to come off of thirty-three on Garden City Road, and the bridge in Franklin County was taken out. You know, so we used to have that way, too, but we don't have that way anymore.
Now, that caused me to have to drive thirty extra miles a day, when I had to well at the end of the road, just in Franklin County, and I used to go to Garden City.
Right, because we, how I come into town is I either hit Garden City, which is six miles, I hit Liberty Road, come in here, or I can go down, turn to the left, and go down Deerfield and hit Litte Kingston and come into here. But right now, we have one way in. Like I said, if our little concrete bridge is completely washed out, and I'm telling you, the rocks are washing out from under it. But like I said...
Okay, let me, let Riley come back and tell you.
And I would, like I said, I would like these to speak to, the ones that come.
Okay, looking for Riley, Ms. Hutchins, did you have something you wanna talk about? Okay, Riley?
The creek she's talking about, back when we had this nine inches of rain, we pulled, and it blew out, and I got all the material ordered, it should be in within thirty or forty-five days. I bet you it'll take about three days till it's repaired, so I think we'll get it repaired as soon as we get the material, the material has been...
That's the pretty bridge, bridge, okay. Now, the other one she's talking about...
Other bridge is a new bridge that was installed probably seven, eight years ago. Dozer installed that new concrete bridge. I don't know, several years, or a couple of years after it was put in, Robert Day and several others from Water Soul Contamination, when I looked, because there's a water coming, and she meant it, he's trying to change its course. And it was taking the bank, so we had them go out and look, and call it, so they went out to look. There was nothing they said they could do to help with. Now, for changing courses, nothing we can do, get out in that creek, divert that water, change that course. I mean, we just can't get down there and do that.
We got another property problem there.
Correct.
Is that forest or that?
When I go out tomorrow, I'm gonna look at that bridge to, you know, see what we can do about it. Or it's washing. I will look at it tomorrow. But the other bridge, I figure it'll be less than sixty days, but we should have the other bridge back in service.
Hope we don't have any big rains, because it could get worse.
So, he's saying they're just gonna sit there and let that one wash out, too?
No, hold on. Anything else, Riley, right now?
That's all I have to say, is I go look tomorrow and see what they tell me on that bridge. I mean, like I said, what was washing before was on the downstream side of that bridge, past the bridge, and waiting on the right away that was washing out property. And that's the reason we had NRCS and Robert Dayman go look at that corner. Was nothing they could do, but I'll look at what their concerns are about at the bridge. First I'm here, and so I will look at it tomorrow.
What time are you, when are you going out there?
I thought I'd meet her out there about eight o'clock.
In the morning?
Yes, sure.
I might try to meet you out there, so...
Yeah, because it, when you come and see, it's gonna be a major problem. Just, I forgot to tell you that actually there's another little road called Man, wait, McCann Lane. And you go to the end of it, and the bridge is over here. These people, there's like five camps, the creek and the wash, they can't even get to their camps. And there's no electricity, they didn't cut the electricity off.
The biggest problem I see with that already is forest service. And we've been battling for three years on Burke Road to get them to give us a right of way. Are we still patenting that, or has that, they ever signed that? But anyway... They're not real helpful.
That's why we come into you, because I have talked to forestry, I've talked to... Engineers, I've talked to every, you know, I'm just asking for help, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're, I'm not a rich person, I can't, I can't do all of this by myself, you know?
It all rose not privately out.
Okay, who else would like to speak?
Okay, we got one, two, three. Got about five more.
Okay.
Just let me speak.
I'll keep it kinda short.
Okay.
Whoever wants to go first, if you need to go to the podium, introduce yourself. All right, what's your name and address?
Reton, excuse me, seventeen guns all this road there. I live, I live up by the main road in there, so I'm not as much involved with what's in the back of the unit back there, but I do, these people will tell you that I do try to help them and whatnot as much as I can. But the main thing that we got to do is, even the main road going in there, it's tearing our vehicles up, it's tearing our trailers up, it's just ridiculous. I mean, we need somebody that knows how to protect the road. I've been living there since nineteen eighty-five. Back for years and years and years, just a few years from now, that we got the road that's all tore up. Back, you could do fifty miles an hour back there, back in those times on that road, because they kept the road up. And they, when they graded the road now, they only getting dirt about that high. Back when the man graded the road before, it would be like this. So, here we went through a period of time, and right now, he just graded. When did you grade?
I had pulled a work order.
About four days ago, he graded. Right now, the road will beat you to death, because they didn't cut. It's just rough, rough, rough. I mean, and the whole atmosphere of that whole area, they just left it alone and letting it, you know? I've put starters on my truck, batteries in my truck, every, I mean, we've had motorhomes stuck that got run slap off of the road. I mean, it's ridiculous. When, when you can't, and we was told, all right, our mail only runs three days a week, because the road's so rough, they can't get in there. You guys, the garbage don't come in there, which that's fine then, we can all buy that. But, and then Franklin County, see, they have to come in around through you guys' road to go in there to do that. They've offered to, when they run through with the grader, to go ahead and grade it and help with it, but you guys are stopping it and won't let them do it. You know, it just don't make sense to me.
I don't know why we tell them they couldn't do it, but, oh, that's not really our call, but it's not our road.
He's speaking about Garden City Road is what...
The post, I called the postmaster lady about it, and we was trying to help them with the mail and this, that, and the other, and she's the one that I know that told me that Franklin County was gonna go ahead and grade the road and fix the road, and then it didn't happen. They got stopped. But they're talking about moving the mailboxes up on the mail, the main road, and that's what they thought they would do when they closed those roads, because they got so bad down in there. But, but what happened was, the main road got even worse than they did. I mean, if, can you imagine ditch that deep all the way across the road? And you having to drive through it? Can you imagine that? I mean, y'all, and not just one. I mean, these guys will tell you, it is a mess. I mean, God, Lee, and I realize we used to have some kids there, and a school bus run that, you know? But now, we don't have no kids in there, but it won't be too long before we will, though. But now we don't have no kids in there, but it won't be too long before we will though.
You're talking about further down Garden City Road?
Where we're at, at Sandy Creek. The, the whole Garden City Road and Deerfield Road is what we're talking about. I mean, it is.
Six foot line starting, I mean, cutting off the deer, deer season. We tell that all the time.
This ain't, this is not deer season.
It's the same grader man that's been there, Harry Ray's been there for twenty years, so it's the same grader man, him, Jerry Buckles, Jerry retired, Harry Ray's been there all along, change with him, but I'll find out.
When you cut, when you graded the roads here about four days ago, the ruts were down, don't come out like this, okay? But, okay, they were down so deep that when he graded the road, they're still there, so you get two, three vehicles going in and out. It, it, it starts digging in and out. And right now, coming in here this morning, the road is solid watering holes.
How long did you grade?
Not grading it, not grading it deep enough.
Four days ago, I don't know, but if you cut it that deep as he wants and it rain like it's raining, he won't come out. He wouldn't have done it this morning.
Yeah.
But anyhow, we'll look at it. I, I like said, I still got some grader man that's been there a long time.
Look, that road, that road used to be good. It used to be good. I'm just, I'm just being honest and any, any of these people.
Okay, who else would like to speak, just now?
Hi, my name is Debbie Tasson. I live at one thirty-four Cary Road. I am all the way at the end of Cary Road, the very last camp. We bought this property three years ago. We were told when we bought the property that the county will take care of the road. Right now, if, because of the washout, which is quite a bit ahead of us, 'cause we're all the way at the end. Um, we won't be able to get to our property. Not only will we not be able to get to our property, but when we lose utilities, water. We lost water a week or so ago. We didn't have water for a whole day because the creek washed out the water line. If we lose power, they can't get back there with them big trucks to fix our power. We'll be without power. Now, also, our land from that dig rain, from the, we're right on the creek. Our land did wash away. We know our land washed away. We know it's our responsibility to back up our land. We will do that. But we're concerned about the utilities and anything that's going to our property. When we were told, we wouldn't have bought the property if we weren't told that this was gonna be maintained. Because we bought this as a second home. This isn't our main home. Now, also, um, our taxes went up this year. Our taxes went up two hundred dollars. Our taxes went up and nothing is being done with our tax dollars. So we're like, why do, and then we, now we can't sell the property because nobody's gonna go back there to buy it. Because in another, if we had a couple more rainstorms, we won't even be able to get to our property. And that is our concern. You know, we were told that Adams County will take care of this road and fix this washout when we bought the property.
Can you tell me who told you that?
Well, when we went to closing, I, I, I don't remember the attorney's name or whatever, but when we went to closing, we were assured that we would not have a problem with this property.
Who'd you buy it from?
Um, a man from Baton Rouge. I can't remember his name either. I don't, Mr. Williams, I believe his name is.
Um, I, somebody fed you some false information.
Well, you know, we were told this was a, 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 a county road, not a private road, that, you know, they would maintain it. And now we're stuck. We're stuck with property that probably in another year won't even be able to get to if this road isn't.
This, this was brought up the first year I was in, in office for, four and a half years ago and, um. If, we knew that that was not a county road then, and that, so somebody. I, I don't know if you get, have a lawsuit on that, it's not, not my, but somebody promised you, I don't know if they put it in writing or not. If they put it in writing, if the county maintain this road, they, they have a problem. But, because we have been fighting this and trying to figure out, I think we had a borderline issues and stuff back then. We couldn't grade the road because of border lines and. And sewer lines and all kinds of stuff, 'cause if, if we go in and break somebody's stuff, then it's our fault.
I understand that, but now I, I'm paying taxes to property I won't even be able to access if this isn't fixed. And like I'm saying, I'm not rich either. I can't afford two hundred thousand dollars to fix a road to get to my property. My property is not worth two hundred thousand dollars. But, you know, that's a concern. I'm paying taxes to this county for nothing, basically. That's how I see it.
The other, the other thing was taxes went up all over, all over the county because we, we had raised taxes in, I think, twelve years.
I understand that, but I.
That's why they went up, 'cause the, the, the price of labor went up. Every, insurance, everything we paid goes up, so we, that's how we had to make.
I understand that, but I won't be able, no utility truck is gonna go back there. They can't get back there. Right now, they can't get back there. And that's a main power line. We're right on a main power line that would probably, um.
Um, Robbie said he was gonna look at it tomorrow. I might come out there too and we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it a little bit and see what, what we can do, if anything. But legally, we cannot do much of anything out there.
As we, Ms. Hudson, as we previously discussed with Robbie on the phone, we're gonna look at it for an emergency watershed project which addresses erosion. And, and I'm, I hear what y'all are saying and the board hears what you're saying, but that's what we talked about. When Robbie asked me, so let's see if we can get emergency watershed project funding, 'cause two hundred thousand probably won't get it with these projects, be more than that. So there's federal sources that we go after and try to get, and that's the best way to address issues like this. And so I think that's what we're gonna try to pursue.
I mean, I have to get, I have to get back to my property with the duck truck with big rocks to put back my property from continuing to wash. I want them to do that because I'm gonna be afraid that the road's gonna wash from underneath me when I pass. So now I'm not even gonna be able to pay, repair my property behind, and I understand, I'm on the creek, I bought that property. But with the intention that, you know, you can't fight Mother Nature. Mother Nature is gonna wash the creek away with the rain. I understand that. But we could fix it, but we won't have access to fix it. You know, I understand we are going to fix it, our property.
Yeah, we understand you, like, 'cause we have four hundred and sixty-nine miles of roads we maintain and it is, we, we have washed out. I think we had five roads washed out in that dig rain, uh, the other day that were supposed to be really good roads.
I mean, it's, I just paid my taxes and I wish I wouldn't have, because they're not being used to help me any.
Okay, does somebody else wanna speak? Uh, you, you'll have to.
I just wanna tell y'all about the power line. If they have any coin to you, that power line.
You need to stand up. You gotta stand up by the podium and talk.
While he's going to the podium, Ms. Middleton.
Uh, Scott, my question is, if we do apply for an EWP or if there's other funding, is it Southwest Electric?
Yes.
By law required to provide services and access to their customers?
Looking to that and see if.
So if there is a, if there is an EWP or a way that the county could assist, could EWP part, I mean, Southwest EPA partner? In helping finance or fund this process?
It's a main.
I mean, if they're paying for power and they can't get power, Southwest EPA should be.
That's what we said, there's five camps up there, get the power skirt cut off, this creek just cut them completely out.
It's not their fault.
Okay, go ahead.
The one, the one thing.
I'm sorry, hold on one second.
Let me say something. Um, I agree. We, we will try to do this, you know, on the supervisor, I hadn't had a chance to say anything. And I haven't spoke with many of you all because I have, I haven't gotten any call in regards to this. Uh, I just got a call on, I think, Friday, uh, saying about Cary Road, uh, had some problems, some washouts or some of that. And I have spoke with, uh, Mr. Dollar, the road manager, in regards to this. But, um, I had said that I was gonna come out with him. I'm gonna go out with him in the morning and I'm gonna come out and see what's going on. I am going to Washington on Friday, and if we get enough information, I would like to submit this as a EWP project. To see, um, what we can do or how much we can get, but I'm also traveling to Washington on Friday. I'll be speaking with the congressional people. I'll take these pictures. I'll get Robbie, give you some information, a booklet. Like I have these books to take with us on Friday and see if we can get any funding to help out that EWP project. I also want to say this, once we submit this as a EWP project, it can take time. It's just not an overnight. It can be a year or if they push it or go ahead and provide the funding, then we'll pay with that. The two hundred thousand dollars, if that is the price that has to, uh, the amount that has to come up, like I say. I will be traveling to Washington Friday. I'll be asking for some funding and maybe we can reserve that funding, uh, to help with that project. Um, I know we submitted a project before on Liberty Road and as an EWP project, it came back. Well, we had paid two hundred and sixty-four thousand. Am I correct, Robbie? And, um, we could not do that project. We didn't have the funding for it. Um, the house, they said they wouldn't do that project anyway because the house wouldn't value at two hundred and sixty-four thousand. So they wouldn't allow us to spend that kind of money. So I'm just letting you know.
Right.
That is.
Well, all of our houses together back there are over two hundred.
Okay, and another thing is, uh, I wanted to say, uh.
Like I said, I would go.
Another thing I wanted to say is, uh, I always try to tell people when they purchase a home. Get your information before purchasing that home. Get all your information, find out if you're a private road, find out if county gonna maintain roads. And all that kind of stuff. And, and I tell people, do not buy a house on a buyer, because even if that, that buyer is way back there.
Right.
In ten years, it's gonna be up on your house. So I, I try to let people know that, you know, the little ones will tell you anything to sell a home. You know, they out there to make money. They don't care. They'll tell you the county's gonna maintain all that. Find that out before you even purchase that home. And, uh, nothing, when it's a private road, you see it, in, in order to get the county to maintain it, it has to be brought up to county codes. Thanks, everything has to be brought up to county code.
It wasn't in the county's, it's taken care of.
Yeah.
Well, actually, it was, uh, is, are you?
Go ahead.
Are you, are you finished?
I wouldn't get what he was gonna say.
What you call it is private road signs and what you call it is public road signs?
It's, there's a pro, public road registry, it's a county road registry in the Chancery Board's office. It says every road that's public, there's a road by law we can work. If it's not on that registry as a public road, we cannot work it and get in trouble for doing that.
Okay, but what color a sign are on public road and what color signs on private roads?
Same color.
Same color.
Because I was told that one sign's blue and one sign's green. Is that correct for public and private?
No, we don't do that.
It's based on. That is what we have.
Am I not correct that there's two different colors?
There's actually three or four.
I know, I know, I'm from the cars from Louisiana.
It's a preference.
Private lanes are.
It's different.
Well, it's not, it's not missing.
Different here.
They're the same color.
Same color.
They're all. How you know putting the private road signs, but they did put it out loud.
We did put on public, a private road signs for emergency purposes, we can put them.
We need, we need to finish with this gentleman and anybody else who wants to go to the podium, you start making your way there.
Okay.
Uh, which?
Okay, there's two things I wanna say. One thing about the power line back there that nobody's really understood. That power line back there is actually the main power line from the Grand Gulf Nuclear Plant. It did go down once already and they had the big trucks and that's one reason that roads went out like it did. They had, I'm talking about all kind of vehicle, huge vehicles going back there and fixing that line. If that line goes out now, you're gonna shut down, holy mackerel.
Does that, what, does that line dead end down there by the creek or is it across the creek?
And it feeds that.
It, it.
It's your main feed to here.
It's your main feed. It goes all the way down into Louisiana, way down into Louisiana.
The reason I ask that is 'cause that gives you a little more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the other, the other thing I didn't think about telling y'all a while ago, even the mailman, the reason they cut us down to three days. The mailman come through there, of course, he might have been going a little bit fast, but he went, he hit one of them rust spots and throwed him out through the woods. So that's why we're down, that's the main road now. That's the main road. That's not the roads that we're on that are camps.
You talking about the Garden City Road?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The main road, the mailman, and I mean, and that was all brought forward and everything. It's just, I mean. If you rode that road one time, you'd be sick. I'm just being honest.
Well, I, I rode it for about twenty-five years straight, 'cause I own wells down there, so I, I know about it. Um, at, at any rate, um, now hunting season's over, they, they will get down and grade the road when, when they get into the, the Garden City. Uh, and it'll be a lot better, it won't have any extra traffic.
All before, all before hunting season.
Did anybody else wanna go to the podium and speak?
Do we have, this is the one. Wanna go, Steve?
Well, I don't have a lot to add to what's going on, but.
But he does live back there, anything?
Steve, Mayor, where do you live?
Sandy Creek State.
Okay.
What's your last name, Steve?
I don't have a lot to add.
In my R D.
In my R D. In my R D.
I don't have a lot to add, but it's already been said, 'cause that's pretty much what I was gonna say. Other than, in fact, I'm gonna address something that Ms. Hudson said about us buying property whether it's on a county road or not. I bought my property in ninety-one, and I know for a fact the county was working that road all the way up to building. Whenever it was, seven, eight years.
And we're not gonna disagree with you on that, 'cause we know, we know about it. I think what, why she said that, just to clear this up, was anybody that's listening, watching, or gonna read about this, um, should know that what she said is, is.
Well, I, I agree, I agree in what she said.
Because just like this lady, three years ago was told.
In two thousand, we had a public hearing, pu, all private roads or public roads were adjudicated and they were listed on the county road registry. I don't know why this particular road wasn't added to the public road registry that was being worked during that time. It never got added and so, and, and that was the turn in, like that two thousand.
I can tell you why.
Uh, sorry, from two thousand, that moving forward was, uh, that was a turning point where the law says if it's not on this road registry, you can't work. Had a big public hearing, some roads got added, some of the roads didn't, that, that creates some issues for us. Uh, not just y'all's road, it's been other ones that have done it. But as I said, supervisor and everything, we're gonna see what we can do and if we can get this fixed, do everything we can for you to get it done. You know, I know that Supervisor Hudson, when she gets her mind on it, it gets done, so.
Could be added, no?
I, I found about this Friday, Robbie, I think found out on Friday, does he call me? And you got called Friday, so we got called Friday. We all said the same thing, so. Well, I didn't, I haven't sat on it for two years. This is the first I heard of it was on Friday and the first time Robbie called me. And that's the first time that, I guess she's heard of it, I mean, she's.
The biggest.
The same thing.
The, the biggest problem is, you know, it is not a county road.
That's why.
And we, and to adopt a county road, you ought to see the, the level of your road has to be to be a county road. Even, even when the county was doing it, it was not, it was not eligible to be a county road. As far as being adopted. And as far as being adopted, it is, it is stringent. We had one in Bowprey, it was a concrete road. And they had to put culverts in, gutters, I mean, but they had to come up to standard, and that's Bowprey. So it, it's just like, it, it is not an easy thing to pull off now because so many counties adopted so many roads that were. And, and then every time you turn around, they're blowing out, and, and we cannot accept roads. We'll go back and try and fix roads.
I have a question, how can it be a private road if it is not privately owned? None of our property lines go into that road.
If it's not on the public road registry as a county road, it's not owned by.
But y'all assumed responsibility when you were caring for it for thirty years.
Okay, if it didn't make it to that county road registry, we cannot work.
And that's probably the ones that did our maps and Mr. B. O' Cannon was the person that owned our, all this entire property. And Miss Carrie, Carrie wrote his name back from Miss Carrie, which is his wife. But it prob, it's probably their fault that it didn't get to the registry or whatever, however, when they so-called.
Well, my fault, 'cause I.
I, I know, I, I, I understand, 'cause I've been here thirty-five years and that's what I'm saying. But we, what I'm asking for is if you'd like to come, she would like, I'm gonna come out there and I'll watch you around or we can ride around together, whatever. I, I wanted, 'cause people, some people don't understand, we're calling that stuff, but then they never come to us to see what we dealing with, what y'all would have.
Well, you did the right thing by getting on the agenda today and, and, and now a lot more people know about it.
That's why I asked Mr. Dollar.
We will try to find funds to, to help.
That's what I'm asking for sometimes, sometimes.
So this, this is something that's bigger than the county.
I know, I, I.
It's bigger than y'all, or, for sure, because that's...
Maybe we should go up to our department of Engineers. What happened, the reason why that started washing out, is because back in like forties and fifties, when they did not want the Homochita River emptying into the Mississippi, they dug canals. I've researched all of this as to why that started washing out. They dug canals because they did not want the Homochita connecting to the Mississippi, because it was overflowing in the Mississippi. So they dug all those canals to try to keep the Homochita from overflowing if they disconnected it from the Mississippi. And that is what has started causing all the erosion. There have been numerous scientific articles written about what they've done down there.
Well, they're, they're getting sued, um, mightily for their doing all that on other issues, flooding people's land, killing timber and all that. But, but anyway, that's, that's a lawsuit. I don't know how far it's gonna go, but it, it's, it's huge.
We love joining in on it.
And I, I would like, this is our...
Okay.
This is our...
Okay, we gotta listen to one more person, and we're gonna, we're gonna have to move on.
He's the one...
We got a lot of people.
He's the one who's the one.
Okay. State your name and address, please.
I'm, uh, Brandon Fortimeri. I'm a resident of Tepie County. I think I'm in the wrong courthouse. No. Um, I own the water association, um, which I purchased in December. And if y'all can help explain all this to my wife, I would greatly appreciate it. But, uh, the water line washed off into the river, um, with the erosion problem. And, um, like I said, I'm not a resident down there, just on the water association. But, you know, you've got everybody opinions, hundred, over a hundred people down there, a lot of permanent residents, um, you've got a lot of, like, the tempers and all that. I understand their frustrations. Just a general consensus from meeting the people the last few months and being down there, the general sentiment is, I mean, they're humble, hat in hand. You know, their frustration is, there's probably a hundred thousand dollars annually of property taxes collected. They're not asking for water, they're not, they're not asking for garbage, they're not asking for even daily mail, you know, delivery. They're just asking to be able to fix this spot to access the property. So I just wanted y'all to know, we're, I'm willing to do whatever it takes from a water standpoint, you know, if we need to bury the lines deeper, move them, shift them, whatever, that's not a problem. We'll take care of that, to make sure these guys have water. But, um, like I said, just the general consensus is, I just would like this spot fixed to be able to access the property. And one more thing, or two more things. The high line that he was referring to, it's, it's not a, a regular power line with wooden poles. It's the actual high line, hundred yard wide, the main, you know, the main high line coming from the power plant is, is what that, that particular line is. So, but, um, but like I said, they just, they're, they're good people down there, hardworking people, paying taxes, just, just need some help with, with this, with this problem, this situation.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, and if somebody else has something to say?
I, I got something to say. I got something to say, uh...
Yes?
I, I, I understand frustration, and I understand, uh, about property erosion, because, I mean, I've been with the city, and I've been with the county. Here go the clock. When property start eroding, and from what I'm reading, if it affects the health, welfare, and the well-being of the citizens, then it is something that can be done. Uh, I understand we got a money problem, but at the end of the day, that's reason I asked the attorney to read, gave him that code, nineteen five dash ninety-two. And it, and it, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but Scott, help me out. Am I reading it wrong?
You're not, and that's subsection two is where you apply for the, for EWP as well. And then there's a point one that's after that, that allows you to alter in tr- uh, channels and streams and whatnot.
So, what I'm saying is, the majority of the properties that we apply for EWP for, uh, all of them don't endanger the welfare and the safety of the citizens. From what I'm looking at on these pictures right here, and Robbie, I know they don't do the emergency stuff no more, but this gone way past being an emergency. And, uh, I know it's short, Robbie, but you need to get a booklet on this. And, uh, Congressman Thompsonoff is called when we had that big rain and asked it, asked if we have any problems with erosion. I mean, uh, it, it's very important that you communicate with your supervisor, because it's a window when we can and can't apply for this. They give us so many days to turn this in. And if you don't turn it in, you miss out. But what I'm looking at, uh...
This happened quick, quick. When that water come up, that, it just started, and it started caving, caving, caving.
And me are going to Washington DC to sit down with our Congress people. And with the pictures I got, I, I don't see how, nobody can turn this down, but the problem is, getting the money will live faster than we usually get it, because in another year, this whole road gonna be gone. The house and everything else.
Yes, the camps that are private side it. There's, there's, it's actually more, that it's just the whole, is the whole starting from our bridge, the whole creek is redoing itself.
Other people have...
There's, there's more problems than what we just... There's more problems, like I said, there is, but these are camp, the, I'm trying to address the people that cannot, been there and cannot, you know, but the camps do. But also, there's people that it's cut completely off. They, they can't even get it. There's five of them sitting. When I, y'all come, I will show you. You have to, you have to come see.
It says promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens.
Right.
And that's, that, to me, seem like what we would be doing is exactly what this code say. So, your supervisor gonna be going, and I'm gonna be going, and I know she gonna present, because y'all here, and we just see what we can do.
Thank you. Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Thank y'all. Uh, Mr. Gaines?
Right. Um, I would say, you know, we've been sitting here, I've been sitting here listening, I've been also, uh, reading to see, uh, you know, what's legal, uh, what we can and can't do. And I know it's a bad situation, but I, uh, I don't know if y'all feel like people, uh, we are hearing you and not wanting to help you. Uh, we just trying to stay within our legal boundaries, but what I'm hearing, you have a power company that's possibly involved, can share responsibility. You have several things, and so I would say, uh, I'm pretty much sure, when we get with the road manager, attorney, uh, the president coming out there and look, that we will do everything we can from a legal standpoint to help y'all, because I do understand where y'all coming from. And I hope y'all understand that, uh, like the president said, what happened thirty years ago, the state hold us accountable, a whole lot higher accountability for what we do. And we are not trying to neglect y'all, what you do, but I don't think either one of us gonna go to jail either. So we are definitely trying, we are definitely not trying to deny y'all. So we will, I think we will get together and come up with whatever plan that we can to help y'all use for them.
I think the power company has a very big problem. One day I was going to my property, and I had to pull over on the side of the road because the trucks could not get through with me on the road. And they had about four big trucks going back to that main power. So that is a big issue. They will not...
That's a caveat, you, like, I needed to call Mr. Bradford, he's our emergency management director.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, everybody know, uh, when we talking about, uh, what we have is the emergency declaration, that we have to, the supervisor has to sign to get on private property. Without that, then, uh, I've been talking to Robbie, you know, we're trying to get, make this, get a good plan, declaration for this. Yep, so we have to build our numbers up. So if the road department want to make access, I can send that information to me. And meanwhile, what that does, turn out, if we meet a threshold of damage, the government can sign a declaration to allow money to come into the county. The power companies work the same way. They all follow up on the emergency declaration act. Because guess what? If, what you paying, I'm just gonna be honest with you. What is you paying? If it's supersede, what it gonna cost to fix? You, you follow what I'm saying? They not gonna put money, they can't give you money back out of it. They understand that they got power right there. So we also have to understand that, when the federal government look at all this, they look at, is it a secondary home or a primary home? That plays a, I tell you the truth. That plays a important role when they, well, how much money the supervisor can get. So what we asking is, y'all be patient, we're working it. Robbie, once he send the numbers, I send them to the state. And once we get that declaration, that takes the, uh, body owners off the supervisor. Because like you said, we cannot put equipment on those roads. It's not a rush, unless there's a declaration signed. And once I feel that there is enough there that we may qualify, I will come before the board and say, let's do a declaration for that, so we can get reimbursed for that. So we're working it.
That's two different, that's two different paths of funding, both federal. And I know Robbie and I already, and Angela already talked about doing that. What can care about it? We wanna get this fixed. We hear ya.
We under- we understand. Uh, and I'm, I'm asking is, why can't the forestry help you with that? You're coming through, Gordon City Grove comes through Sandy Creek Management Area.
I don't ask what it is.
I ask, no, the forest service, I, I had to maintain their roads for them, wherever I have oil wells.
Practically speaking, this is the methods that will get us funding quickest. Since we done it before, and that's what we're gonna try to do, is go out the quickest way. Brad, that's excellent idea, so we're all working, so...
Okay, well, I might, I might ask you something, just one second. I need one of you to list everybody that lives out there, who's a permanent resident? And who's, you know, if somebody has that, that would be a bitch, Brad, or something to work off, and Mr. Dollar, something to work off. Okay, this is the last question we're gonna take on this.
Sir, is there any, is there any way that we could get maybe about six or eight truckloads of, of, of broken cement and pour in the curve just to stop the washout for now?
I, I know some people are hauling that, and that would be a, a issue between the residents and the people that are doing it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Robbie. If we do that, then it's not gonna qualify.
Not gonna qualify, okay.
If you do what you just said, and put those rocks in there, then we, you gonna disqualify your project.
Because the current, right now, with just a little bit of rain, it's steady washing up and falling. We won't even make a pass back there, for them to go back and forth to get their... This is all parked in my yard, because it's steady falling in, it's straight up, and the water coming off the hill.
Okay.
It's pulling the street down.
We're gonna, we're gonna look at that tomorrow, we'll, we'll let y'all know what we're gonna get.
But the first little rain they have, what's left of that road will fall in. I can promise you, because I live within two hundred fifty feet from that washout. I'm the one that lived right there.
I need to get the list to the residents.
Robbie Dollar, Mr. Bradford, or you can send it to them. And you can send it here to the, to the county for supervisor. All right. We're gonna stop, stop on that issue, uh...
Thank y'all.
I'm gonna call, uh, Millicent, uh, Granny, up. For her question, I gotta leave room for that, y'all can exit, and, and I can talk to you briefly, on that.
You can exit if you want, certainly can say...
Turning it over to Mr. Millicent and Vice President.
He's talking to him.
There's only two of them.
One. One. Need one more. Kevin and Angela's going out there with, with the...
Thank you, get stuff here.
Uh, good morning, my name's Millicent Brandy, we're all residents of Abbot County.
Ms. Brandy. Ms., uh, my friend, before she start, I'm gonna ask that the conversation we have dealing with this, it needs to be part of again, just like she said, because we speak to our members, and it's, it's gonna have to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'd like to address, um, Kevin Wilson's comments that he made to the Natchez Democrat after their meeting in January. And this is a quote from the Democrat. Uh, Jan Brandy was present at the meeting, and I think she talked to him afterwards, because he confused her up. So the quote in the paper says, um, contacted after the meeting, Wilson said, "The work happening on the property he owns is preliminary," and said, "There is no major construction happening." Okay. These are photos from the property. This is a concrete holding tank. It's approximately a hundred and twenty feet long. I'll be passing these out to y'all. There's a series of several other tanks, one's approximately fifty feet, uh, one's approximately thirty feet. It's thirty by twenty tanks. There's some major form work done. This is a very large, it's got a curb on it, maybe for the centrifuge. Um, this is also on the picture. And then there's several acres that have been cleared. So I would say that that is a false statement. Scott, I know you told me that, because there's no application filed, that there's the process, the seven step process is, uh, y'all can't do anything? Well, if Kevin's building the... If he's building the, um, facility, I mean, what's the point of the process? It, it says must be followed, and that it's stable. So I think it's really putting the board in a really bad position.
You need a permit to operate this facility before you can do that.
Well, but it's all of a sudden need permits to, um, to start building it. You should pass those around, so y'all can see.
You don't get permits from the county outside of the...
You, you, you do need a permit from that, that seven step process, that the state said that y'all must follow.
Right, and, and so the application would be step one of getting a permit?
No, I'm saying that, that, that application hasn't been done. But, but it's already been built, so the, it's out of...
Can I get a motion? I will research the permitting process and give a report back to the board. I was gonna wait till we had an application before starting to work on it, we hadn't had it. Is that okay with the board? Should I do that?
Yes, sir. You heard the request of the board attorney? Can I get a motion? Motion by Supervisor Brandy, second. Second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion?
And I would...
All of the labor? All opposed? I have a, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Um, I would encourage you all to write out and take a look at it. It's pretty major construction, maybe close to a quarter of a million dollars is this one. So, uh, I would say that that first statement that Kevin made would be a false statement. Uh, the second statement, "We cannot and will not operate or construct a landfill without the proper permitting." Well, uh, we talked to, uh, Michelle Clark, who's the head of the Compliance Division at MDEQ. She was aware of the project, she sent inspectors. They will, MDEQ will be citing Kevin Wilson for not getting the proper, the proper permits. Uh, and they will be issuing a cease and desist order for that construction to stop. Now, that's separate and apart from the seven step process to remove the waste, uh, plant. So, uh, MDEQ's doing their part. I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to do your part, so thank you for that previous motion. Um, so we're looking at a second, uh, false statement. "We would never do anything that is illegal and have not done anything that is illegal." Uh, we're going to be asking the Attorney General's Office for a ruling because of Kevin's position as the president of the Board of Supervisors, and the fact that this really has not been done transparently, and the fact that this really has not been done transparently, and that these false statements are being made, and that he stands properly for this project, even though he is not taking into consideration. Uh, and I am in, in constant, um, conversation with the members of Mount Sinai. That is the historic church that's right across Shieldsburg. So they are not for this project. And, um, we will continue trying to build that route. So I don't think that public sentiment is going to be on the side of, of this. I don't think Adams County wants to be the dumping ground for seven states. I don't, with the tourism, the retirement community designation, I don't think that's who we want to be. And Kevin has enough money, he could locate this in an industrial area. I, I, it scares me that he spent this much money building this, and how y'all are going to vote? No against it, because the county, the Board of Supervisors does have the power, uh, to end this. I talked to Charles Bock at MDEQ, and he said that if you vote against after we go through the process, and we have the hearings, which is only fair to Kevin. Uh, I'm not saying that we're not going to do the process. We're going to do the process. But when it comes to the vote, if y'all vote against this, that is the end of it. There's no more project. So I, I would hate to see Kevin spend a lot of money on something that may not be approved.
Well, and that happens to people before. They spend money, they put the cart before the horse, and if the board didn't approve it, they don't approve it. And rebound, I'll book those names. I'll call them and part of the research, and if there's anything that the board needs to be doing now, we certainly will do it. I wasn't aware of it. My understanding is that you have to start the process by an application, which a lot of things are like that with the board. And sometimes, yeah, they say they're going to do things, the application never comes, and that's that. And I address things when the application comes in, but now the board's giving me authority to go look it up, so we'll do it.
So, so were y'all aware of that extensive construction? No?
I, I paid about it. I really didn't go through there. I just paid about it. I knew something was going on. I didn't exactly know.
Pretty, pretty, uh, pretty sensitive. Kevin also said, nor would I ever try to put any undue pressure on the Board of Supervisors or do anything that I think would harm this county in any way. The last thing I would like to say is, it's not up to Kevin, or what he thinks is an individual. This is up to the citizens of Adams County, and it is up to the Board of Supervisors to do what is right to protect those citizens, and not what one person thinks, when they are in direct conflict, because it's their business that's going to, um, make money from this. So, thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
You, you keep. It's just the rocks, pictures.
Yeah, when I told her, see, you're part of the, because minutes ago, and Ms. Granny just came to you and had a conversation. We speak.
Glad it's warm in here. Do the showcoes out there? Okay, we're ready. Uh, Mr. Fur.
Hi, Mr. Wilson. Uh, Joseph Fur, I'm the last day part of tech, uh, for the Jester Willis Ball Field Project, 63 by Main Street, Baton Rouge. Uh, I don't know if, uh, Granny's passed out the, uh, uh, handout that I gave you, but, uh, a little business today. First of all, to give you an update, uh, construction is going well. Um, at this point, the, the, uh, the ball field is basically completed, you know, inside the fences, and contractors, uh, in the process of forming up for some of the plots and the flat work around the, uh, around the stadium, uh, to give us access. The sports lighting, the poles are up, the lights are up, the wires pulled to most of the poles. They're currently working on, uh, building the panels and, and the connection to the power system and so forth. So they're on schedule, I believe, to have the lights electrified, uh, prior to sometime middle or later this month, is what I'm being told at this point. Uh, we also, uh, at the last meeting I was here, approved painting the stadium. That work, uh, I'm going after this meeting to do a, a final inspection of that. I, I believe it's complete, or nearly complete today. Uh, but, so we'll, we'll be doing a walkthrough on that. So we're moving forward toward completion. I have a few, um, a few change orders that I'd like to present, and, and hopefully get approved for some of the work that is, uh, needs to take place out there, and then just kind of discuss the path forward. So if you look at the, uh, if you look at the, the handout that I gave you, this is just a summary of the costs to date. Uh, the top line, does everybody have this?
We did.
Okay, the top line is the original contract, uh, less the value engineer, uh, that, uh, change order that we did. Uh, and it also includes, um, uh, uh, change order number, um, number one and two. Number one was the, the deduction for the value engineering, number two was some, some unforeseen site issues that you guys approved. Uh, you also approved change order number three and four back on November 6th. Uh, so the total, uh, under that contract now is 1,673,130 dollars. I have two change orders that I'd like to present for approval, uh, that would come in below your, uh, the allocated bond dollars, uh, that we have for the project, all things considered. Uh, change order number five is for adding some, um, pads, some protective padding on the, on the back of the backstop wall. Uh, originally, we had hoped to reuse the, the pads that were there, but once we pulled them off and, um, got them and looked at them and saw what kind of shape they were in, just really doesn't make sense to, to put those back on the, on the building. They're, they're kind of falling apart and all worn, so.
How do you, how do you come up with pricing?
Uh, we asked, we asked the, uh, uh, the contractor to give us a price to, uh, to purchase them and, uh, and install them. So, uh, I've got, I've got a breakdown on his change order, uh, of, of that, uh, but this is just a, uh, something that he would purchase from, uh, a supplier. Uh, and I, I don't have the information in me, uh, in front of me right now as to which supplier that was, but.
Does he do a change order, or you have to prove that it's commercially reasonable?
Right, right. I, I believe that it is, uh, you know, looking at the, the price that he, he told me, uh, and I can provide, uh, more, more backup information for that, uh, if, if we need be. Uh, but, uh, but, I mean, he did submit a, a, a change order, and, uh, that, that was appropriate in, in terms of providing the, the quote for, from the, uh, from the manufacturer.
So it's two steps. One, number one is foreseeability, which it was not foreseeable. We thought we were going to reuse the product.
Right.
They couldn't, couldn't reuse after you took them off. So it's not foreseeable. Second thing is that the pricing was commercially reasonable. Oftentimes, we do unit pricing, so that we just use that unit. Was this part of a unit pricing?
No, it was not. This is something that was not in the original.
Then we need enough information for a minute to show that it's commercially reasonable for pricing.
Okay, uh, do, do I need to bring that back to the board, uh, at, at another meeting?
Yeah, just.
All right. Then, then we can, uh, we can skip to number six, because I don't have that information, uh, with me today. Number six, uh, is some additional drainage, uh, and some additional concrete along the right field side of the, uh, of the stadium. This, as we, as we complete more of the parts of the project, and we're starting to see how the water flows, we've got some, we've got some areas that are just flat, that we need to put some subsurface drainage in. Uh, these, both of these items, we do have unit costs that we can compare to, uh, and, and those are commercially reasonable. So, uh, that, that includes a, a drainage line that runs really from the outfield all the way down, just outside of the ball field. So it runs, this, this is, this is in the area between, if you're familiar with it, in the right field, between the, the, the ball field and the backs of the batting cage. Uh, that area gets really flat, and it takes a whole lot of water, so it's hole with water. And it also helps us drain the plaza area up to the north. And then we also have some, some concrete areas that we're adding that are raising the concrete. We had some old concrete that we were trying to, to, to maintain, but it ended up basically being a hole. The grade, the subsurface grades would work out for us to get subsurface drains there. But we do have, we do have unit pricing for both of those items, and, uh, uh, I would ask, did that be approved? So I don't know if we need to take that up as a, a, a motion before I proceed, uh, but.
Yeah, you need to approve the change order.
Okay, and that's for the, uh, drainage?
That, that would be a yes to approve change order number six.
And number five, he has to bring some more information with him?
Yeah, yes, he should. A lot of commercial pricing, commercial.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve change order number six for the drainage. Moved by Mr. Millicent. Second.
I'm a second, and I got the stuff.
Yes, ma'am. Second by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion?
Funded. This is, we have a funded in there, but it's.
What does this keep this on the project?
So, uh, if we, if we look at, if, if you follow down, uh, under, under that, if we were to approve both of those change orders, which today we're not, but my math has it, if we were to approve five and six, uh, the Stubbs contract would be at 1.7, uh, 1,819,687 to be exact. We have a contract for bleacher installation of 230,0825. Uh, we have a contract for painting the, the, uh, painting the bleachers, which is, uh, as I said, should be complete today, and I have a cha, I have a proposed change order for that, which I'll discuss in a minute. If all of those were to be approved, the, uh, the total construction to date would be 1,983,412. The design fees on the project currently are 190,000, uh, so that's a total of 1, uh, 2,173,412. Uh, it's my understanding there are 2.2 million available in bonds, so if all of those change orders were approved, uh, the balance on the bonds would be 26,588, so you would still, you would still be under the, under the budget if you approved both of those changes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussions?
Uh, Mr. President, you know, I'm not a change order man. I don't like, uh, being on projects and these, coming with these, all these change orders, but I know it needs an approval, uh, so I'm approving.
Okay.
I, I would, I would like to say something, uh, on the drainage, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the issue on that side was there was a main gas line.
That's correct.
That was not disclosed on the survey.
That's correct.
It's a six inch main gas line that runs between the highway and the fence. So they weren't able to grade, because it was only buried how deep?
Uh, I, I think it was like two feet. It should have been.
And it, and I believe a main power line as well.
Yes, there, there are some utilities in that corner that were not on the survey, uh, and, and certainly not some depth of them. Originally, we had planned to have a squail that just took that water out. Uh, and, and we, we, what, if you recall, one of the change orders was to adjust the field in that corner to, to, to add some drainage to that point, because the whole corner of the field was going to hold water. Uh, and then now we're finding we can't get the water outside of the side area, so we're tying into that drainage. And the depth of it, you know, is, is, you know, it's not super deep as it is, so we're, we're having to work it around. And, and this, this actually, you know, was not part of the bid. This was not even part of the project, so it's not like we're, we're, it's not like he's asking for something that was in the actual drawing. This is something we're asking him to do ancillary to, to the, the drawings that were bid, uh, in addition, yes, to his services. So, and, and we do have, we do have a reasonable number from the Markwell Dan Point to do.
My only other question, uh, on those pads, does that delay the possibility of that field being ready for playing?
Uh, I, I don't think so, uh, because I believe, uh, I, I believe that those pads maybe have already been ordered, uh, just to make sure that they would be here in time. I'm not sure what the, the status of the delivery date is.
I'm just wondering if that motion should include that, uh, pending him getting you that information instead of waiting a whole two weeks.
Scott, we think we amend the motion to include the padding.
Pending.
Pending him getting the proper documentation.
I just don't want to wait it up two weeks.
I could probably get it for him from him today, and, and maybe we get it back before.
Can you call your office and see if he can get it for us?
I mean, if you can just get a price from whoever else.
I can, I can, I can call him before I leave and see if he, if he has somebody at the office that can send me the paperwork.
Just a thought. We didn't just decide to get a handout too.
I just don't want to delay, because we're looking at the end of February.
Right, right, right. And, and we, we, you know.
Yeah, and he said this was Friday. I didn't have a chance to look over it or whatever. Was asking about something else.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just amend the motion pending, uh, or do you want to just wait on that?
Just wait and see if he can find it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, we'll just wait then. We'll just wait. I'll, I'll.
Well, we're gonna carry this motion. You're gonna withdraw, halt the motion?
Or let's just carry the motion to, to, uh.
Change order six.
Change order six.
Okay, all in favor? I have that, uh, motion carried.
Okay, I also am, uh, requesting that the change order for the painting contractor be approved. This is to, uh, provide scaffolding, scaffolding, uh, originally, when he bid the, the project, uh, we, the plan was for him to use his, his bucket truck to be able to get up under the, uh, under the, the, uh, the, the roof to be able to clean and, and paint it. Uh, and it turned out, the only way for him to get his truck under there without impacting the, the, the sequencing of the contractors that were doing the, uh, that were doing the, uh, the power, uh, installing the, the lights. We've got a lot of wires and cables to go under the, uh, under the bleachers to the main, the main distribution panel for the lights. And he couldn't get alongside of the building where he was planning to, to be able to reach with his truck into the, the underside of the stadium without parking there and, and impacting that contractor being able to do his work. And we're, we're trying to do all this at, at the same time in order to open the ballpark. So he said he could scaffold it, but he didn't have scaffolding rental, uh, or set up rental and so forth in his contract. So he asked if he could, uh, if he could get an extra 2,500 dollars, yeah, uh, for that. I believe that it's a, a, it's an appropriate change order. Uh, he has already done the work, uh, and he did it, you know, because we didn't want to stop the construction, uh, and, and he, he did, you know, did rent the scaffolding, uh, or he did set the scaffolding up. I don't know if he rented it or was, yeah, so, uh, that, he asked for the change order.
You say already done the work?
Yes. Well, he, he's done, he's done the work. He utilized the scaffolding to do the work. Uh, and he's asking for an extra payment because he had to use the scaffolding, it wasn't part of his bid.
You can't, you can't, you gotta get prior permission for building expenses.
We can't do anything about that, is what they're saying.
They brought, they brought to us?
Well, there was some, there wasn't a board meeting, uh, there wasn't a board meeting that would allow that, so, um, you know. I told him that I would, that there was no guarantee, and that I would bring it to the board and, and propose it, and, and, you know, say I recommended it, which I've done, but if the.
Okay, you did what you could, but we can't do that, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you the bad.
We'll move on from there. All right.
Okay, uh, so then that number would be adjusted, that bottom line would be adjusted to a, to an additional 2,500 dollars. So it would be somewhere in the 29,000, uh, that you would have, uh, left on the bonds, uh, if, if we in fact approved change order number five. So since change order six, uh, number one for the painters not being, uh, that, that would be the number. So we have a, a few items that, that need to be completed, um, which we, uh, I believe are going to need to find additional funding for. Um, we, we have pulled this project apart in order to get specific, uh, contractors and not pay overheads on, uh, on certain items, and try to, try to make this as cost effective as we can. Uh, but the, we, we provided a, a design for the restroom building to the contractor for pricing. Um, he gave us a price for the restrooms, uh, which came in at 205,698 dollars. Um, that's for eight restrooms. There are seven, there are individual water closets or individual toilet rooms. Uh, and there are eight of them in the, in the, in the facility. It's all flush valve, automatic flush valve toilets. Uh, brick and, uh, and party plank construction with, with group tops. And these will be resilient, as resilient as we can make restrooms. It'll also provide, provide many, uh, more appropriate, um, uh, toilets that you need. The facility has two restrooms that are still functioning, uh, but they have barely been functioning for years. There's not enough toilets a, as well. So this toilet, these toilets are definitely, uh, needed to bring the facility up into the, the standard that it needs to be. Um, but with the bonds that you have, we don't have the available funds. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, as well as a few other items. There is some perimeter fencing that, that needs to be to secure the front side of the building. Uh, there's been some talk about renovating, uh, the locker room and, and adding another locker room. Also is, uh, which is something that really needs to happen, that, that those facilities out there are low, they're taking on water. Uh, there are holes in the roofs, uh, they're, they're dank and mildewy. Uh, they're really, uh, you know, not, not a very, um, pleasant place to be. Uh, and I think, again, to bring the facility up to the standard that it needs to be, uh, the, the locker rooms would be something that would be desirable. Uh, don't know how all of this would get funded. Uh, we also have, uh, had some designs for some additional parking right in front of the building that would take care of handicap parking and, and do some pay parking there. So that's just a, that's just a ballpark of what's needed. I think the most important thing, uh, needed would be the restrooms and the, and the perimeter fencing. Uh, the locker rooms could potentially, locker rooms were not very far along those, because that just became. because that just became part of, um, something that we talked about doing. So we haven't done forward, forward with design or anything on that, cause we knew we didn't have money for the locker rooms. We were hoping we would have enough money for the restrooms, but it turns out, all things, all things considered, we're a little short to be able to do that. So I guess I'll just ask you to ask me questions or maybe have a discussion about, about the restrooms.
I agree with you, yes sir.
You said there's eight restrooms?
There are eight individual, so in a situation like this, if you provide women's restrooms and men's restrooms, you have to build twice as many. In today's, today's day and age, what we have gone to on facilities like this are common, uh, common buildings. But it's not like you have a, a, a unisex, uh, or, or unisex restroom. Each toilet has its own lockable door, uh, that you go into and lock from, from inside and, and come out. So there's one toilet in one room and then hand washing and, 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 uh, is outside of, of those rooms. So you're in, when, when you go in to go to the restroom, uh, you're, you're in one, one room. So it's a bank of doors basically that have individual water closets that have lockable doors from the inside. Uh, this way, we don't have to provide as many, so, because otherwise we'd be looking at four hundred thousand dollars if we were doing a, a bank of women's restrooms and a bank of men's restrooms. So that's, and, and in today's day and age, that's, that's a lot of, uh, facilities like this are going to these individual, uh, you know, lockable, personal toilets.
Okay, so no way we can scale back and put two each?
We could scale, we, we could scale it back, but the, the, the code, this is a six-hundred-seat facility. So two restrooms, it doesn't come close to meeting what, what code would be for, for the, you know, if you, if you provided, uh, if you provided men's and women's rooms, you would need, you would need about twenty toilets is what, what it would require. Providing this, now we are providing a handicap, and handicap family restroom that is a handicap accessible room as well. Uh, so, um, we could cut it back some. I don't think there's gonna be a real efficiency of scale though to, in order to do it because part of the cost of this, I don't remember the exact line item, but, um, we found that the, the gravity sewer line there is collapsed and it's old, it's an old terracotta line and it, and it's, has very little fall in it. So we're gonna need to put a little sewage lift station to get the, to get the sewer. That's gonna have to happen regardless because that, those bathrooms don't, the existing bathrooms that are on that, that are on that sewer line are not really functioning very well right now. Uh, I don't know if you've ever been out, but they're, they're, um, they're pretty, pretty nasty. And, and that, that two, two restrooms is not enough.
No, I'm talking about two for the women, two for the men, scale it back to at least four.
Four is still not, I mean, we typically put, we typically put four restrooms in a facility that's got two hundred seats. Uh, and, and those, and usually people are waiting for those, just, you know, waiting for, for ball fields and stuff.
Maybe we can have anyone talk to the school, we make it to school and say, we can.
Scott stepped out, but I, I thought that was a good idea too.
Let's, let's talk to the schools, we just not have, so we not gonna do this, we could talk to the schools and see if they're willing to have funds on this.
Okay. Are you gonna, go ahead, Mr. President?
It's just not gonna work out, but it deals a state of art facility. And the restroom are in that condition.
That's correct.
And the locker room have mold and all that, and, but we have a state of the art field. And as one supervisor, that's unacceptable. We're gonna have to find a way to find the money if it's going like supervisor. All the supervisors really said that we need to probably go to the schools or, or whatever the case may be. But, uh, it looks too good out there for the leaders out.
I agree.
And I don't know if we need to go to somebody else to get this done because, uh, maybe some people that can do it cheaper than what we got on this paper. I, I don't know, but not to do it to me is unacceptable. I mean, it's gonna make all of us look bad and at the end of the day, this facility need to be a win-win for everybody, especially if we talking about inviting tournaments and all that kind of stuff. And people go to your restrooms and we got a brand new facility and the restroom is built when?
Probably in the thirties or forties.
That's, 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 that's not it. I don't even want my name part or nothing like that. If we can't do it right, we don't need to be doing it at all. I mean, we need to come up with some figures and find the money and just do it right.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
And I would just suggest that Scott get with the superintendent and make a couple of us, um, go talk to the school and the school board and see if we can get us to get some funding coming in.
Go ahead.
My thoughts only are, uh, kinda along the lines of what Sir Bruce Gray was saying. Um, that field belongs to the county and I believe it's county's responsibility to provide restrooms on that field. As one supervisor, I think the answer to this question is to use our aqua funds to take the restroom and fix the fence, which I think there's enough money possibly left in that balance that might cover the fence.
Uh, yeah, it, it'll go up a, a long way.
Just to protect our investment. Now, what that fence is, is at the back line, not all the way around, connecting the back of the bleachers to the side fence.
That's correct, that's correct in some form.
And then, uh, go ahead and get started on the restrooms. Uh, locker rooms, there's no, we don't even have drawings yet, there's no way those will be ready for this baseball season. I think that's something we looked at at the end of budget year and see if there's any funding that we have that we can do that, to take care of that for next season, the, the locker rooms. Uh, but I think as this project belongs to the county, I think this board needs to take a step to get those bathrooms started. I think that's my opinion.
Okay, are we, we tearing out the old bathrooms completely?
The plan for those bathrooms would be to take all the fixtures out and make two storage closets. Uh, there, there are two schools that use the facility, as you know, uh, and currently, um, they, I, I believe one of them has a trailer out there that they store some of their concession stuff in. Uh, but the, the idea was to make those two storage closets for those two schools, cause they run the, as I understand it, they run their, uh, they run their concessions independent of each other. You know, the concession stand could use some, could use a facelift on the interior as well, but, um, but, but the plan was to use that for storage, so at least they would have a little more space inside the, uh, that they could store their goods there on site, or we could use it for storage for something else.
So where, where are the restrooms gonna move to?
They're, they're gonna move, if you're, if you're walking into the facility from the, from the back, they will be to the right of the concession stand, uh, but almost in line with the, with the back of the stadium. You know, the, the, the front, front side of the stadium, so the entrance side of the stadium. Uh, they're, they're about ten or fifteen feet to the, to the left, to the right, or I don't know which way you're looking, but ten or fifteen feet to the, uh, to the side of the concession stand away from the.
To the highway side.
To the highway side of the concession stand away from them.
I don't think it'll be elevated a little more with this. You're gonna have to have a lift station though, you can't build up nothing.
The reason we have to have a lift station is nobody really knows where that line ties in. The best they can tell is it goes all the way down left field line and it's very, very flat. It's holding, it's holding water right now. Uh, so we think we're gonna have to put force main, just a two-inch force main all the way down to somewhere in left field. The, the county was not, the county or the city was not able to show us on a drawing. Now Johnny was out there and I think he was gonna call somebody else and he thought might know, but they didn't have, they didn't have it on a map.
The city didn't have it on a map.
The, the city didn't have where that connection was on a map.
They can't locate it with a locator, run a locator?
They, they ran a camera down it and they got to a point where it turned and they, and it was old terracotta pipe and they couldn't get their camera to make the turn. So they, they know the general direction it's going, um, but the, the plumbers that looked at it said, you know, regardless of where it's going, it's, it's not really functioning as it is. And, and that's just for two toilets. We're gonna put, if we're gonna put these, this bigger volume in there, we really need to be able to move that, that wastewater, you know, down the line.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So are you, um, talking with the Natchez Waterworks?
I'm sorry?
Are you communicating with the Natchez Waterworks?
I have not, I have not communicated with them about this, no.
Yeah, that, that, those are one deal with sewage and all that. Now, the city is kinda different, but the Waterworks, is that right, Robert? They deal with sewage. They should have information about every land over there, even though it's, 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 it's own private property. But from my experience with the Waterworks, they should know what it's like.
Well, who, who ran the camera?
The, the plumbers that did the job.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because they, we, they, you know, we had them connect, we just, we originally drew it just connecting into that, that line. And when they, when they looked.
That was when it was gonna be a, like a container system?
That, well, that was when it was on the, when we moved this side, we were, we were, you know, uphill from the, uh, from the line. Uh, and, and so we, we did investigate the depth of that line. And then the plumbers, before they bid it, they went and looked at it. Uh, it actually, um, you know, it comes right outside the, the existing bathrooms, right there by, there's a clean out there, but that's the only clean out that we could find. So, you know, we didn't have the means to, to really locate where it was, but I think they, they did it on their own just before they gave a bid and, uh, and the contractor and his, and his sub, plumbing sub, uh, were the ones that actually, I believe they were the ones that took the camera. But it could have been somebody from the city. Johnny probably, when he said Johnny gonna talk to somebody else, that's probably who's gonna talk to Dennis at the Waterworks.
Well, this gonna be my last company on this, and, uh, this, this way I disagree. Uh, I think we need to do it all now because, uh, in my experience on anything, when you put some, kick it down the road, then it ain't gonna get done. So if, if we gonna do this, we need to do it now. And I agree with contacting schools or whatever the case may be, because if, if, if you do the restrooms, storage rooms, and don't do the locker room, then the locker room won't get done. And I'm hearing this already from people that's in the community. Since Natchez High is the only one use the locker room, that's why it's not employable. I'm not saying it's true, I'm just letting you know what's out there. So I don't even wanna be a part of that, let's do it and do it right.
Uh, are you suggesting that we, so we have shovel-ready, um, plans for the, for the restrooms? We would, you know, in order for us to get pricing on the, on the locker rooms, it would take a little time to, uh, it would take a little time to, to make those drawings and then have someone give us pricing on, on the locker rooms. We, we could, uh, we could move forward with that, you know, now if you, if you give me that directive, but.
Yes.
Then we, don't we have it all already rolling with Tyson on the locker room?
I thought we've gotten about a, not to exceed two hundred thousand at last meeting.
But, well, uh, I, I like, I like supervisor Hudson, uh, we need to contact the school and this is something we're gonna be all proud of. And if it don't get done right, then as one supervisor, I'm not gonna be proud of it, I'm gonna be a part of. Contact the school district, find out if they are willing to assist us on something that gonna help them. Because at the end of the day, I understand it's a county part. But they utilizing it and, and if we gonna have tournaments, maybe a SWAC tournament, I'm already here in SWAC tournament. Maybe Colman could come down here, we got people playing with Colman. We gonna be the last to stop other state of Mississippi to have a state of art facility with bathrooms from the thirties and locker rooms with mold in it.
Yes, sir. And additionally, we wanted to look at recovering our costs, other ma- methods like fees and so forth as well that might be better, so.
I agree with supervisor Hudson, we need to get on that immediately, send something out to them, to the schools and find out, uh, what part they are willing to participate to get this done. That's just me.
What if, what if no one wants to participate, what do we do?
Yeah, we come back to the table.
We gonna come back, we gonna have to get it done.
Come back, do what we want to. Make a motion pending?
No.
I, I think we need to talk to them and bring them to the table and find out, because they utilizing it. It, it, their kids are growing up in the facility that have mold in it. I don't want that child to continue to do that and I'm in the public a whole lot and I'm hearing these comments right now and I don't like what I'm hearing, so we need to fix it.
And, and, uh, there may be some other avenues. And I, you never gonna do my donate to this. So you just don't wanna, I don't wanna just jump and say, let's do this. And we have to talk to other people or other avenues of how we can get funding for this. We, we in a budget constraint right now, it's real. And you just don't use up all the funding and then put the county in a deeper hole.
So do, do the people on this paper just got to be the ones to build this? Maybe we can get some local people to do it cheap?
This is a local contractor and he did, he, he did use local subs, uh, and so, but we can, we, we can secure a di- a different pricing. We were trying to move it forward so we could, you know, start building the restrooms as early as possible. Uh, and then knowing that, I mean, the locker rooms, we've always known this condition they were in, but we had never had that in any of our budgets. The restrooms were in our budgets and we're over budget a little bit, so that's why we moved forward with the restrooms, because we thought they were gonna be within budget, but it turns out they're not, so.
Mr. President, I'm, I'm like this, let Scott send out some immediately to the school and if we need to have a special call meeting or whatever the case may be and deal with that, then we'll deal with it like that.
Okay, and we talked to the mayor as well since, uh, they have an indirect fund, they, they do want to assist, I don't know. We don't seem to get a lot done that way, but it's worth a try, cause there's a lot of children from this area, live in the city, play there.
There's also economic development dollars that are, that are out there.
And that's who gonna benefit from it, the city of Natchez. We don't, we don't get sales tax. So if we pack that stadium with, with a tournament, a, a, a host, a SWAC tournament down here, the city of Natchez don't benefit.
Well, you know, I've been, I've been saying that for a while now that, you know, everybody's all gung ho about this and that and, and we bring stuff to town and, but it doesn't really benefit the county.
Every year they draw.
That's not where we get our money, not where we get our money from. So, okay, oh, so we'll, we'll, we'll get on that, we'll either have a special call meeting or, or our next meeting, we'll, we'll address that. Maybe the weather improved too.
If you hold on a second, I may have the, um, yes, okay. So Scott, I can print this for you, but see if this suffices.
He's here next to the game.
He, he had to, he thought got the permit, he has.
Okay.
Oh, he already got it?
He isn't, but it was just a permit that he just has on all that.
What's that?
The yard.
Yes.
Okay, how, and how are they commercially reasonable?
Just, I, I guess comparing them with other, other products that, that are similar, uh, and, you know, I can, I can run the, um, take a few minutes and, and try to get some other pricing on a similar thing, but, um.
You just have to explain to the South Department.
Okay, you want me to just do it from the?
Yeah, we can.
So on the record, I'm looking at the, the quote, the actual quote for the, uh, I need to see if I can get this a little bit larger so I can really see it. But the, these are the quotes for the pads, um, there are, um, for some reason I can't get this to open up. Did I have a few minutes to maybe move on and come back, come back to this thing so I can do this the right way? I don't wanna do it without really looking at it, I just need to get this on my computer.
Yeah, don't make it that complicated, you have to explain what.
I just, I just wanna be able to read it before I say it's okay.
Uh, Fred Parker's not here yet.
Yeah. He's, yeah, he's the.
Fred Parker.
Fred.
Good morning. How's it going?
Good morning.
Good morning.
He's a, he's a.
I need to take my hat off. I, I'm sorry.
Well, maybe I did some kind of toll this morning.
It was. The guy by them guys in the movie, babe. Thank you, Jim. I'm telling you, I'm not sure. You go sit down, share. Frank, can you?
All right, sure. We share with all of you.
All right, good morning. The first thing I'd like to go over, uh, is the dental renewal. Uh, that first page, if you look, uh, the standard came in with a 25% rate increase. And, uh, so I went out and shopped it with about five different companies. Uh, and if you'll turn the page, uh, United Healthcare, which we had before, if y'all remember, uh, everyone was pretty satisfied. And they handled our claims, et cetera. And, uh, I worked a little magic with my commission and I got it, the rates back down to almost where they were back in 2021, uh, with United Healthcare.
What page, you wanna?
Where, uh, you're trying to, there's the first page, second, third page. And, uh, you'll see towards the bottom, uh, that an individual is 3272. Uh, employee and spouse, 6637, pulling child, 6921, and family, 10857. Now, this is a $2,000 annual benefit. And, and talking to United Healthcare, I said, I wanna see rates for just a $1,000 benefit. Cause there may be employees that they feel like they don't need 2,000 in benefit, but 1,000, particularly if you had a family, would cover everybody's claimings and some little, a little bit of work. So, the next page shows, uh, if we offered both, uh, the 2,000 and the 1,000, it might give some people an opportunity that maybe their paycheck isn't as high, but they would like their claimings covered and have a little coverage. It basically, basically cuts those, the rates exact, about exactly on the half. So, if we went with them, they would be able to, we would be able to offer for the people who wanted the $2,000 benefit, the higher benefit, they could get that. But if they felt comfortable with the lower benefit, they could choose that too.
Right now, we on a 2,000.
2,000, yes, ma'am. But this would give everyone the choice of which they wanted to do. I know, uh, I know anybody that goes to their dentist regularly knows that the past three, four, five years, the cost of going to a dentist has gone, you know, like everything else, it's gone up a, a good bit. Uh, so, most people want a $2,000 benefit. But I felt like there were maybe some employees that maybe their paycheck is, is lower, but they want to not have to come out and pay for a cleaning right out of their pocket for them or the children, et cetera, that, that might be an option we'd like to present to them also.
Well, the first one gives us the option of not even changing anything, rather than the amount, it's gonna be the same.
It's close, very close.
To what they had last year?
Right.
Oh, and they get the same benefit?
Yes, sir.
But the cost is a little higher?
No.
No, it doesn't like at all.
No. Uh, if we move to United Healthcare. Uh, and again, we had them before we went to the standard, and I have had some complaints on the standard. You know, dental insurance is something that, uh, the main problem I see is when you go to the dentist and they say, well, we think we can do it for X. And then when you're all done, it's, it's X plus Y. Uh, and it has nothing to do with insurance maybe, but, uh, with a dentist, it's, but typical, typically, if you're gonna go to the dentist and something's gonna cost more than, say, 300, they could get in touch with the dental carrier, find, send in the codes they're gonna do and find almost, you know, pretty close to what you should pay, what you're gonna end up paying. So, they don't go in and, you know, give you a bridge. And you find out you owe them $3,000 when it's all said and done.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Uh, on the front page, through 33124, being affected 4125, that's the 25% increase?
On, on the, on the fir-, that's where our current care.
That's the increase.
Yeah, and that's why I proposed moving. And I quoted with three other dental carriers. And in general, and every one of them were coming back either more than the standard or somewhere between this United Healthcare quote and the increase on the standard.
Well, I personally don't think $1,000 is gonna go very far as far as the coverage goes. So, I'm, I prefer the 2,000, but that's just me, I don't know how y'all feel about that.
Well, you know, the him, I. Yeah, it would be.
You talking about giving them the option of one or the other?
One or the other, yes, sir.
Okay, that's gonna be fun for somebody, but I can understand, cause some of the, some of the people.
Well, my concern is, we all know that dental health, uh, is, can be linked to heart disease and everything else. And there just may be some employees that don't go get their teeth for you. And but if they paid, you know, seven, seven and a half bucks a paycheck, free, free tax, uh, then maybe they could get, get those, their teeth seen now.
I don't, I don't think he has to sell this very hard. And if we're gonna do both, offer both plans to, to employees, uh, through United Healthcare at this price, and, and you get either $1,000 or you get $2,000 on the other. I don't, I don't see, do we need a motion? Are we gonna make a motion to approve that?
So, the first page is the 2,000?
Yes, sir, the 32.
Okay. That's pretty much in line with what we doing now.
Sure, without any.
That's in line with what we doing now.
Yeah.
But it's just a different company.
Yes, sir.
And the second page is, as I say, is 1,000.
Yes, sir.
And you gonna give them a option?
Yes, sir.
We used United before for dental.
We did.
I'm sorry?
We've used them before.
Yeah, we had, it's doesn't happen, I go.
Yeah, you're about to give them the wrong one.
So, let me ask, uh, maybe the accounting minister. Giving them a option, is that putting additional work on something? Uh, what it may be, I'm just asking a question.
Well, okay.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Yeah, actually, uh, the onus would fall on me at opening enrollment primarily. And then I would.
You have to input it right.
I would have to collect, uh, the death, the sheets if somebody chose it. And then I put all that together and I give it to Ms. Jefferson in payroll.
And she's recognized how much that would be more worth.
One of the reasons I, I like getting this done early and having open enrollment early, because payroll now doing HR, et cetera, give them with all these cancer and accident plans, et cetera, plenty of time to communicate to companies who get their payroll correct, rather than, you know, doing it in the middle of March and getting a craziness there.
I don't understand, you know, you know.
Is this something we can go ahead and make a motion on to approve United Healthcare dental plan?
Uh, I'll make a motion to, um, switch from standard to United Healthcare file dental, uh, plan.
A motion by, which is game? Second by, Mr. Hudson. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried, sent out.
So, Mr. President, I'm like, do me, do me multitask, I don't come up. In the process of switching, so this ends 33124, so I can need to go get all, I can get out of this and then I'm just happy to go.
And I, you know, if you, you know, there's real, I think our current plan has a $50 deductible perhaps, but no deductible on preventive and cleaning, so there's no deductible on that.
That's free.
So, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, you got it. You voted, yeah, you didn't move something?
No.
Play back the tape. All right, Mr. Park, Ball, in your court.
Okay. Uh, one thing I'd like to report on is, can y'all hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay.
You just gotta take that mask off. Hold on, man.
I hope you have one on. Uh, today, uh, our reinsurer has reimbursed the county. I'm looking, I've got a phone, I can't even see this. Good night, it's, it's not full. I'm looking for, pardon me? There it is. Two, 253, 63, 53,0033604. That's come back to the county because, uh, an employee or employees went over their laser or their 50,000, um, deductible amount. And Unity Re has written checks, I've got the check registered here for your perusal, if you'd like.
What was, what was that amount?
Uh, it, I tell you what, 25333604. And I've got copies of this page. And then, now, a lot of this in your envelope, we'll have to, some of them will have to go over in the executive session because it refers to specific employees. But, uh, in exhibit one, it's just a little report to look at, is the, uh, reporting dashboard through, uh, December. And, uh, health and wellness, employee dependent health risk. Now, this is based upon the employees, their sign up for My Access Blue. And you have to answer questions, uh, such as, uh, your, uh, last blood pressure reading, et cetera, things like this. Uh, only 45% of employees have responded to this. Uh, so, you look at the risk factors, it says healthy, 3%, low risk, 10%, moderate, 15%, high risk, 15%. And the second page shows that 36% of the males have utilized their healthy youth benefit. And that kind of sparked the course, men just don't wanna go get their he- their, uh, get checked out. A lot of guys I know say, I don't wanna know, I'll just, you know, if it hits me, I'll go with it. I'm like, okay. Uh, then females, 54% of the population has utilized their, uh, healthy youth. And then, I wanna go back all over. Uh, emergency ru- room utilization, and this is kind of, uh, 22 people went to the emergency room for non-emergency visits to the emergency room. And a thing that's happening is all insurance plans across this country, and United Healthcare on their group health plan that's got a hammer on it, was what an insurance company defines as an, as an emergency versus how you feel as a patient. Oh, is this an emergency? Uh, and I hear stories about people going to the emergency room and they tell them to go home and the next day they're having cardiac attack, you know, uh. But at any rate, uh, this is just a little report. Uh, 92% of the drugs that were issued, uh, painful by Blue Cross were generic. And, you know, the doctors know that, and patients know that they don't wanna pay for a high cost brand name drug if they can afford it. So, that's a pretty good number. And to date, 1,366 prescriptions have been filled. Let's skip over if y'all want to exhibit three. On the first page of exhibit three, I ran a report for the same time period on the plan from April of '22 to January of '23. And as you can see, the charges, and this is for hospital inpatient and outpatient. The charges, April '22 to '123, were $4,208,108. Due to the Blue Cross contract, the payments were 552,928. Uh, and it breaks it down to payment per occurrence, which is 1559. You look at the second page, it's the same time period for this policy period. And you'll see charges were $6,838,529. Payments were $1,266. Uh, so, uh, I will say today, I do not have a firm quote for the group health plan, because there's some, we wanted to be able to show claims after this, a person had dropped off. Uh, but I wanted to show the challenges they were facing. I mean, you're talking about, uh, the plan's paid out 700,000 more. And that's because some people have been very, very sick. And, uh, but I know working with three different companies on quotes, so we'll see how that goes, and let's see. In exhibit four, uh, you'll see that from April of '23 to January of this year, uh, Blue Cross paid out 288,751 in prescriptions. And, uh, Blue Cross reimbursed back to the plan. They don't send the county a check, but it goes back into the plan, $86,251. So, you know, over the years, you hear, you've heard Pete Hawkins and other Blue Cross representatives and me talk about, we give money, you know, you have RX reimbursements. Well, I wanted to see exactly what that reimbursement was today and what's been paid out. So, uh, at this point, I believe everything else I need to discuss with the board, uh, we need, I need to do privately. So, this is, I just wanted to give y'all an update of where we were. Uh, and some, some of the challenges, no matter what, you know, what quotes we get, when you look at those payments, it's pretty, it's very high terms. But, uh, we'll discuss that in greater detail in a moment.
Okay. Bye.
Thank you.
Okay. City government and any, any city government business, God, I know any? Okay. Okay, departmental reports. I was with Mr. Parker, I had to go out, sorry. Like, I couldn't see you back there. If you wear something, not, so camouflage next time.
Yeah, it's a little bright. Okay, I, I actually didn't realize that I had this on my laptop. I do have the full change order request and I'm able to look through this, uh, and, and determine that the, a- a- as well as getting the, the actual quotes from the distributor, uh, that it is appropriate in terms of, uh, the cost for the materials, plus the, the labor to install and, uh, and the, the contractor's, you know, overhead and profit, which is, is, uh, is allowable in the change order. So, yes, this is a, this is a commercially viable, uh, request. So, I recommend approving the change order, uh, change order number five for the, for the pass, uh, on the, uh, on the stadium.
Okay, heard it, request, need a, uh, motion to add change order number five to the ball field.
So.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Hudson, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any more discussion?
Uh, uh, Mr. President, give me a breakdown of what you just said.
So, the, I, I will provide to, to this price, the, the actual, uh, change orders, which we can put to the board, the actual requests, but there, uh, the breakdown, um, let's see, this is a raw change order. So, the, uh, the direct cost, um, come to, uh, So, the, uh, the direct costs, um, come to, uh, eleven thousand, five ninety-three, uh, plus the, uh, labor, the overhead and profit i- i- at eighteen percent, which is what's established with the contract, is, uh, comes to thirteen, uh, thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Anybody opposed? I'd say, man, motion carried. Yes, sir.
Um, a little unclear, this is my directive, uh, as far as the, the restrooms. I understand we approved these two change orders, um, and we, we have a few dollars left that we can start looking at fencing for without getting any additional dollars approved. It is the pleasure of the board for me to come back, uh, maybe at the next board meeting and potentially present pricing for, um, for the, um, restrooms as well as the locker rooms, are, are we considering phasing, uh, doing them all, but getting started on the rest- restrooms earlier, just want to give the, the contractor some kind of idea. If, if he demobilizes before he starts this, then, then that price may not, may not hold. I'm, I'm just trying to get a, a little clarification on my directive.
Well, President, uh, Russell, we said we was gonna have a call meeting. We're gonna try to get this meeting with school board set up immediately, uh, see, uh, school board or the superintendent, to see what they're willing to do. Scott is walking over there today. Hopefully, by the end of this, uh, week, we can have a call meeting and, uh, take care of that. But we can't start something and that has not been approved yet.
Correct, correct. I, I, I just wanted to note if anything that I need to do before the next board meeting relative to the locker room.
Probably get a firm price on the locker room. Is that price of driving bathroom, correct?
That, that's a firm price on the bathrooms, yes. Uh, I, I'll have to do, I'll have to do some drawing, some plans, you know, for that. So, I don't know how fast that will come. But if you can secure funding for all of it, we could go ahead and, you know, we go ahead and start the bathrooms while we're pricing, pricing the locker room.
And on the bathrooms, that includes everything, like, whatever the problem is going to sewer line.
That, that, that's a price to...
Everything's gonna be done when I get a change order and say, oh, well, we didn't know about this or that.
The only other item that is included in the bathrooms is actually gonna be under the, there is a, we are waiting for a, uh, uh, an additional pricing on the electrical contract to add additional service for the restrooms and the, and the locker rooms, uh, and also some lighting under the, under the bleachers, which, which needs to be done. But I don't have a quote on that yet, so I didn't bring it to the board yet. Was hoping to have it for the meeting today, but they didn't get it to me. They're supposed to have it today. Uh, so, but that's, that's outside of the bond, that, that would all be in part of the lease purchase, uh, project, because it's all wrapped up in the electrical. Uh, and so, we, we, we weren't considering that in the two-point-two that we had available. So, uh, but that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be additional to the bonds, that, that would, you know, assuming there's nothing unforeseen that we have seen so far.
Okay.
Based on what we know.
All right, thank you, Mr. Parker.
All right.
All right. All right, departmental reports? Mr. Brad, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay, you gonna let, the sales go first?
Good morning, and sales, we... First, I want to give you the, the numbers, the calls for January, the whole month of January. Yeah, Adam's SO had four, four and six, Nat's PD had one thousand and eleven, Nat's fire department had fifty-two, with twenty-three being canceled. Also, I want to request permission to move forward with the renovation of fourteen Fifth Street, I heard anything on that so far. Our equipment is, is, is malfunctioning and that's why I keep bringing it to the meeting because we did tell you that they said that our motor took him out and lifeless, so go out completely. Nothing has been purchased because we agreed to get the, whenever we get in the new building and get the stuff that we need for the new equipment, chairs, et cetera. Uh, Jackson Con came out to look at the building and he needed some renovations done to put the towers that stayed asleep for our computers and runs our computer. So, Johnny, um, got with some contractors and got two bids, so, two quotes for knocking a wall out and building those, that area, put the tiles in. So, we do have...
How much were they?
One of them was five thousand and four hundred dollars and one was two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixteen.
Is there anything else that's needed to get it moved over?
No, this is what the biggest part that has to be done.
It's twenty-three hundred dollars?
Yeah, other than us doing floors.
Doing what?
Other than us just putting down flooring in, in the dispatch area.
What would that cost, do you mean that?
We don't have quotes on that, Jay. He just said that we was getting quotes on the major thing part, that's the only thing major is possible, I had to be done, other than the floor and the paint, that's it.
Well, um, whether we can get something worked out with the city on that or not, we're still gonna move them, I mean, we're gonna put back brand new equipment, I assume, in that basement to get flooded again, uh...
It'd make no sense to...
And we're already paying...
Still install the equipment wherever you're gonna be.
Mr. President?
Yes?
You, President, man, the mayor ain't got nothing to do with him or having a problem. Y'all need to get together and go on and figure out where we gonna go with this because it's been getting to the curb too long now. So, they suffering down there, they need somewhere to go. Either the city gonna participate or they not gonna participate. We just need answers, we can do whatever we have to do.
Uh, Scott, are you at a meeting with the mayor, myself, you, and if, uh, Ms. Washington needs to attend? Anybody else wants to attend, but just as quick as possible?
We have to.
Do we need...
Hopefully, if you can...
We're gonna do a motion?
We, we need a kind of a global pricing, it's gonna cost twenty thousand dollars to move. Is that why we know how much we're asking for? I think it makes sense to me how...
We need a rough estimate. We know neither what flooring's gonna be, we need to know what the equipment's gonna cost and moving whatever equipment we already have over there. Now, we're already paying, uh, the grass, getting cut, the, the electricity's on, I assume that they have gas, you know, gas over there as well and water and sewage, so we're already paying bills over there, uh, so we might as well make the move. We need a motion to get started on that first part?
You would need a motion to get that started, if that's the problem with the board. Before you go asking for money, though, it's a good idea to have, this is how much it's gonna cost.
This is a better idea. Okay, so we just, so let's get that meeting set up as soon as possible, as, uh, Mr. Gray has so eloquently put.
So, Mr. President, in that, I turn in a question. Plan A is to be doing this together. If Plan A don't work with Plan B, we gonna have to do it on our own? And if that's the case, are all of the dispatches gonna go or the city gonna take their dispatches? Or how this gonna go?
It, right now, we're on a month-to-month contract with the dispatch and if the board decides it doesn't want to continue on with that, doesn't want to continue supplementing the city's pricing on that, then the board can say, look, we're gonna cut our ties and, you know, we'll have enough to support the sheriff's office and so forth, where the board can continue on with the status quo.
Well, y'all need to have a meeting, because I prayed for coming today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do you understand, and it, we, we need a pricing so we can ask the city how much it's gonna cost to move it? Does that make sense?
Okay.
And we need anyway...
You have most of the quotes anyway, only thing you don't have is for the renovation part, but I...
Yeah, I, I just want to know what, because I don't know what's, what, what you need, just to close, this is how much we need.
Okay.
I need to know how much I'm asking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a new hire?
Yes.
Okay.
A bestie.
Bestie, Marie, best quest?
Yes.
Telecom communicator, twelve dollars an hour, that can give the annual salary.
I'd like a motion to accept the hire for D. L. one one.
All right, moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gray. Uh, any discussion?
Yes, is this a replacement or a new hire?
She's a new hire.
Yeah, but I'm talking, she is replacing on the...
Okay. All, all in favor? Motion carried.
Glad to see you, look brand new.
It, it, it's good to see you again, it's been a while, I know you've been down.
Oh, yeah.
Glad to see you back.
Thank you. Good morning, the new price purchase clerk for Adamstown, the board is... Firstly, I would like to spread a travel credit card across the Minnesota pool pretty simple.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? I'd say, motion carried.
Okay, we had the third disaster debris removal bid on January thirty-first at ten a.m. We had nine bids submitted. First bid was TFR Enterprises Disaster Response Division for six seventy-five per cubic yard. Service Environmental, seven twenty-nine per cubic yard. Looks Great Services of Mississippi, five twenty-five per cubic yard. KDF Enterprises, seven sixty-five per cubic yard. Robert Wilson, eight seventy-five per cubic yard. Southern Disaster Recovery LLC, eight twenty-five per cubic yard. Good Hope Recovery, six eighty-five per cubic yard. DRC Emergency Services, seven forty-eight per cubic yard. And Dynamic LLC, nine dollars per cubic yard. We had one additional customer, I mean vendor, custom treat, um, bid came in at ten oh seven, so we informed them they were not able to participate in the bid. And the lowest bid was...
Looks good.
Looks Great Services.
Look great.
Look great.
Great, I'm sorry.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Question. My question is this time, have you and Mrs. Bradford got together and did all the necessary, so you and him be on one court, not you and Seth to bid, but have Mrs. Bradford okay his part of the, uh, D. L. one one, uh...
Yes, yes, he's, he can speak for himself if he likes.
Ms. Bradford, you good?
I'm good, they, 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 they all submitted.
Yeah, but I checked out, what we need.
They don't have disconnected phone numbers or anything like that, okay.
They knew what we need, okay. So, what's your recommendation?
Look great.
Looks Great Services with five twenty-five, it's the lowest bid.
Okay. Oh, we need a motion to accept the lowest...
Disaster cleanup release.
How long is the term for, you know, man?
One year.
One year.
Starting now.
Okay, can I get a second on that? Seconded by Mr. Gray, any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Passes. We'll call it unanimous. Okay.
Okay, that's all I have, any questions?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Lord.
I know you're right. None of my work, though.
Tell us who you are.
Larry E., Jr., that is. This is all real property. You understand this?
Bad news, he, we got...
Bad news.
Not my stuff. Walnut Creek Farms, he sold the mobile home several years ago, he's been paying on it this year to collect it. It would be eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents decrease in the taxes.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Hutchins, need a second. Seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
I have four here where, uh, somebody pulled their mobile, uh, their homesteads last year. Uh, they pulled their homestead, so they didn't get homestead for, for the twenty-three road. So, they're asking to be reinstated so that they can have their homesteads back. One is, uh, Charles Woods, he's over on Gaylord Road, that's three hundred and seventy dollars.
Can we do that add up?
How do they, how do they get pulled? I guess would be the first question. Did they just, because they don't have to sign up every year, right?
No, no, they...
How did they get dismissed?
The way I understood it, if they go out, if somebody goes out there or an appraiser goes out there, looks at it and, uh, decides that mobile home, it's not on this lot, you know, they've been having a lot of mapping problems lately. And they, they'll come in and just say that the mobile home doesn't have homestead out there, the mo- mobile home's over here on this land. That's the way I understand it.
So, is it randomly left on?
No, it was pulled, it was removed because these people have been out there for years and they had mobile hu- uh, homestead out there.
So, it wasn't pulled because of them being...
No, no, uh-huh, no, the state did not pull these, some, somebody from our office.
And they had moved the trailer from one spot to another or anything like that?
Yes.
And same people are still living?
Yes.
Okay, you want to do...
So, these, these people timely made their homestead application and it got, for whatever reason, taken over?
Right.
No shooting.
By error is what they're telling us.
So, let me ask you a question, Mr. President. So, they applied for when?
No, no, they're not applying, they, they applied many years ago.
But you say somebody, they even took it off.
Somebody in our office pulled their homestead, took it off the road.
So, we gonna give them homestead credit for this year?
For twenty-three, for lack of it.
Okay, that's what I was saying, thank you.
And it's gonna be straight for twenty-four?
As long as we do this.
As long as somebody don't pull it.
Okay, you want to do all four of them together? Sure, just read it down.
They're all mobile homes and I think what the appraiser was doing, they didn't realize the mobile home was connected to the land, so they were thinking the mobile home was somewhere else.
How many of them is it?
All right, give us the four names and the addresses.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Woods is on Gaylord, that's three hundred and seventy dollars. We had, uh, Juanita Robinson on North Concord Avenue, that's five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. John Thompson, Thompson, he's on Eight King Circle for a hundred and thirty-six dollars. And we had Christopher Gaines on Old Johnson Road for a hundred and fourteen. So, three of them were mobile homes and one was a house that was pulled.
Okay. Need a motion to, uh, reinstate homestead on those four properties?
You're just adopting the order.
Okay, adopt the order. Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gray.
President, I'm, I'm reading some here. Bin Laden to five D with Chesapeake Clerk to be others for homestead exemptive in January receivable each year. So, we doing this because it was a mistake?
On our part.
On our part, thank you.
No, part of the minutes are gonna reflect that these people all timely made their application for homestead, some of them years ago, and so they all did what they're supposed to, it's just a mere hour assessment.
All right.
And that's why the tax agency is asking for it.
All in favor?
Just not as...
Okay. Uh, Sumpawa Road, double assess, uh, Rayford, Basset, Rayford, Basset.
Baptiste.
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 I can't see it anyway. Uh, it was double assess, is what it says here, over on Sumpawa Road, uh, two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-three cents. Can you say his last name?
Baptiste.
Baptiste.
Ninety-seven year old.
Is he?
Okay. Need a motion. You got that ready? Okay.
Brunkfield.
Hold, hold on, we gotta finish that one. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries next.
Does he own that building alone?
No. He's by the name and cell, man. He's by the name of seven, that's filming off.
That could have been his son in home.
No, he's from somewhere else.
Okay, I like him, um...
Which one?
This old guy, this old guy. I'm the one top pulling.
He's a good, he's a good nice guy.
He is, Michael and Christian Brunkfield. A mobile home. The mobile home is on the mobile home road. But these Brunkfields have land out there. So, the appraiser went out there and put the mobile home onto the Brunkfield's land. Not knowing that it was on the mobile home road. The mother-in-law lives in the mobile home. And Brunkfield's own the land. So, they're asking, it's double assess basically, she's already paid her taxes on the mobile home road. And, uh, it's not connected to their land, I mean, it's connected to their land, she don't own the land.
Where's this little guy?
Sandy Creek.
Sandy Creek, twenty-one Sandy Creek. His name?
Who?
Miss Brackler. Miss Brackler.
Yeah, I thought it, I thought it was...
Who live out there?
So, they're asking for that mobile home, figure it out from his land.
And how much is that?
Six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents, exactly what she paid on the mobile home road.
Oh, move.
Okay. Mr. Gray, a second by Mr. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh. Motion carried.
Kenny Collins. Sagefield Road, one fifty-five. Double assess. Total loss, six, one hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
How much?
Six hundred, sixteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
Okay, need a motion?
So move.
Second by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion?
Kenny Collins.
Kenny Collins.
Kenny Collins.
Sagefield.
Is Kenny or Penny?
Penny, Penny.
Kenny Collins.
Okay.
It won't be five eight.
Yeah, I remember all that errors.
All in, all in favor? Uh.
Um, Joyce Graves. One Judy Anne Lane. Uh, double assess. They're asking for a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents to be removed.
Uh, motion by Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh. Motion carried.
Andrew Thomas. Thirteen fifty-nine, Highway sixty-one north. Double assess. One thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
One thousand, four hundred?
Four hundred and sixty-five and ninety-four cents.
Alright, need a motion?
So move.
By Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh. High.
Address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thirteen fifty-nine?
Thirteen fifty-nine, Highway sixty-one north.
We're gonna have to cut the taxes, it's salary or something over there, somebody got to pay for this.
It ain't my house.
Alright, what else you got?
Uh, evidently she has purchased this place, Cynthia Stevens at two hundred Main Street. The square foot was incorrect. So he corrected the square foot and that knocked off, that would be knocking off two thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. And she just purchased it last year.
So, alright, who, who reassessed it, or, 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 measured it?
Wayne.
Okay, Wayne went out, okay.
Who measured the first time?
The prior, the prior assessor. Cause I had to work downtown yet, I don't, some, so much I have, but not much.
High rent district over there.
Sir?
Says a high rent district there.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, okay. The other week, uh...
Who need a motion?
Need a motion. By Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines. Any more discussion? All in favor? Uh.
Fifty-seven Roxy Road.
Motion carries.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fifty-seven Roxy Road.
Okay.
Wrong square footage. Nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Hay went out there, read? Measured it? It's been measured by y'all? Not, not by them?
Not by me, no, I didn't.
But one, one, Wayne or somebody measured it, okay.
It wasn't me.
Okay, need a motion for the square footage. Second by Mr. Gray. Second by Mr. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh.
Mr. President, so we refunding this, uh, they just go out and pay?
They have not paid yet.
They have not paid, so...
Yeah, we're not refunding anything.
Thank you, ma'am.
I tell them we're not refunding.
We have lowered our budget by ten thousand dollars over the last five minutes. Oh.
Oh, and just from our...
Oh, it's getting worse?
It's getting worse, uh-huh.
I knew that was gonna get back in favor.
I said, what?
Okay, what you got?
Uh, Joyce East. At, she's at one fifty-eighth Roxy Road. And, um, she called in and said her interior was, uh, not in good shape and, uh... So he reduced it, he said that on his notes, it was the interior is in bad shape plus ten percent. So he reduced it the assessed value from twelve thousand to six thousand, basically cut it in half. And that would be eight hundred and eight dollars and two cents reduction. And no, I did not go out there, no, not me, I did not.
Need a motion maybe?
So move.
That's by Mr. Gray. Second. Second by Mr. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All can let it through. All in favor? Uh, motion carried.
Odell Carter. Gaile's Avenue one oh eight, G A I L E Avenue?
Gales Avenue.
Okay, uh, he didn't have S on there. He just purchased the place and he had a fee appraiser come out and gave him a quote for thirteen thousand. So, uh, it was lowered from ten thousand, one fifty-nine assessed value, ten thousand, one ninety-five to one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. Wayne said the, uh, inside was in bad shape, that he's, that, uh, Mr. Carter's gonna have to get, get all of it. So he's asking for a reduction of one thousand, five hundred, thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
Is this strictly, strictly a house or just a house and some acres?
Uh, all I have is a house.
It ain't no acres on it.
Uh, I think it's a lot.
Yeah, it's just a lot. And that house is in bad shape, really, but it's...
I think he just purchased it, he, he's gonna try to work on it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gray. Second by Mr. Hutchins.
He's a super nice guy too.
Any discussion? All in favor? Uh.
Okay. Take more, we're doing good. Um, this is one of those abatements, remember those abatements from last year where they kept pushing for us to get them pushed through? This is on the banker's house up here. Mark and, Mark Diamond and something Scott. At one oh seven South Canal Avenue, South Canal Street. He came in saying that, um, he submitted the wrong amount for his abatement. And that would drop his taxes, two thousand, five hundred, eighty dollars and thirty-five cents. If we accepted the new amount.
If we agreed to these abatements?
No, so we, the county did not, the county did not take the abatements, the city, this is strictly city. But we had to, uh, basically approve it since we did the key in and everything. But we did not do abatements for these people.
If we not taking abatements, why would we approve abatements that we're not taking?
You should be approving a value that shouldn't have anything to do with the abatement.
Yeah, well, he wrote on your abatement.
Okay.
But we had to bug on it last year.
What she's probably saying is that the property was overly assessed, this is one of the grounds you can reduce. Property was overly assessed, was it overly assessed by the assessor?
No, on the abatement, the taxpayer has to supply you the money that he spent on this place. And he's saying he didn't spend the two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars that he rented to us, that he only spent ninety thousand.
So he's saying it's been overly assessed because he gave you too much money that he spent.
That's it, he said he gave us the wrong figure.
That's, um... So this has to be re-assessed?
No, no, for an abatement, when the city gives somebody an abatement, you have the original house over here and the abatement, you have to put on a separate pen. Cause for that separate pen, they're only gonna have to pay school and county. Cause they're gonna be exempt from city, just on the abatement amount of money. On the original house, it's, it's normal, it's full tax. Does that make sense? And for the abatement, they have to tell us how much money they spent on that house to redo it.
And they said they spent two hundred and nine...
You say we didn't take another one?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, Mr. Slower said we probably need to take this one under advisement, so we're gonna take it under advisement.
I thought we were gonna meet with the city people about that anymore.
Well, I think we're supposed to, but this was on me to type yesterday, so I'll be typing.
Okay, last but not least.
Um, Herman and Laura Price. Twenty-three green acres. Is asking for a reduction of, uh, assessed value, two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four. Total tax loss would be two hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Trace gone.
This was one of assessed at sixty thousand for many years and jumped up to be seven thousand dollars.
And the square footage went up and the tax manual, and then now, uh, they've worked that math. And so everything is more equalized out there as far as depreciation.
So move.
Move by Mr. Gray.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Uh. Motion carried.
The one taxpayer I had complaining last time, uh, withdrew this complaint.
Okay, thank you.
So. Thank you.
Next.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, you all, this complaint.
Oh, no. Good morning, boys. Uh, here's y'all update, uh, we've been working on our long-term recovery committee for Adams County, it's going well. Uh, we met with a couple nonprofits, uh, we had one, uh, that agreed to it, so we're gonna have a meeting. Uh, probably in March with our state counterparts. So we're gonna go ahead and try to move forward with that, she did agree that she would help us out, uh, in event we have a disaster and anyone without any, uh, insurance, you know, they have been wanting to manage the money we get from the state, we gotta help those individuals out. Up to the face, so it's going real well, uh, we're working on that, we'll give y'all the invite if you wanna come and there.
Okay, who is that you're talking about?
Uh, the long-term recovery committee?
Long-term recovery.
Yeah, every county has to have one, it's a committee that...
Yeah, but I'm talking about who has agreed to?
The nonprofit, unfortunately.
No, I'm saying the committee itself.
She's asking.
No, no, I'm saying, we have, we haven't put their name out yet, until we...
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is something we gotta approve yet?
No, no, we gotta prove, we gotta meet first, then we come back to the board saying this, yeah. Cause they, once we meet the state counterpart, then they say, we're good, then we can move forward, we just got to get the people in the room first. Uh, next, our two thousand, uh, twenty-three housing mitigation plan, uh, has been approved by the state and the federal, uh, emergency management. Uh, so the thing we have to do now is approve it at the local level. I did put a copy of a resolution that we have to do, uh, for the board supervisor, but first we have to advertise it. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and one Smith print, uh, we're waiting on Smith print to go and print the documentation out, so people can come review it. Then the next board meeting, hopefully we can adopt it, uh, as part of our, uh, two thousand and three, uh, district nine, uh, housing mitigation plan. I also got to do the same thing for the city, we got to post it, give people opportunities to look at it, review it. Then we'll come back next board meeting, go and adopt that, but the, the board president, she have a copy of the discussion resolution. It should be already filled out, she just had to sign it like we're here.
Bradley's made it easy for him.
Yeah. So I just need, we need to prove this board to start advertising, uh, for the, for the county, for the county.
What do we approve?
It has a mitigation plan.
Where is it?
It's supposed to be in, oh, is it?
No, no, it's, to the page, it's online.
I can't see something, I ain't seen it.
No, I'm saying we got to post, to advertise.
Oh, we did advertise?
Yeah, yeah, we gotta advertise, we gotta...
I moved that we advertised, what kind of plan?
The housing mitigation.
The housing mitigation plan.
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Hutchins. Any discussion?
We also gonna put it on our, uh, county website, so people can go ahead and put it on.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion approved.
Okay, next, I wanna ask the board, uh, we're gonna go ahead and do a proclamation for a don't be mercy from the flash flooding that occurred, uh, January twenty-fourth. Uh, so I know our road department's out and working getting dollars and stuff like that, so we can go ahead and submit that through, uh, to me.
So move. By Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Okay, the next thing, I don't know, Brandon, I don't know, did the board, uh, yeah, EMS OF grant for FY twenty-four did they? Did we put that, did we, we never run for the board?
I don't think so, cause we submitted it to the state, we're waiting for comment.
Yeah, I would say we got to break before the board to apply for it first, so...
Correct.
Yeah, I wanna go ahead and ask the board, we wanna go ahead and apply for our twenty twenty-four EMS OF grant application.
Could you explain it a little bit?
That, that's the medical fund that we get back from the state, the state trooper right ticket. It's used for our medical, med, emergency medical service account. That's why we bought, uh, the truck through. And we have three years to, uh, uh, have the money's escrow, we got to do an escrow account. So we spent the last three years' money on the new truck, I think we got like twelve thousand, well. We're gonna spend that, then with escrow, the eighteen thousand most we give.
Okay, need a motion?
We do this every year, huh? We do this every year.
Yeah, we do this every year, yeah.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Millen, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried.
Okay, uh, the last thing I would request trouble for myself, I gotta attend the Department of Homeland Security, our forum at Two Blue College, uh, in Jackson, Mississippi, on February sixteenth.
So move.
Let's see if I have it. You got paperwork?
It just, I'm just going to turn around and back.
Okay, we don't need the paperwork.
Uh.
Alright.
It's been a little bit.
Moved by
Gaines.
Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Also, we did, we did, I don't know, it was the way she got a call from Mr. Dunn in the COVID area, by the side, we did, yeah, okay. I told him we would, I took care of it, it didn't activate last time, but when I got, went out there and checked it, and it is activated, so if you get a call. Thank you. That's all I got, put in the question for the board.
First thing I have is, uh, two fold request. We have one with, uh, Bill Wade and Kimbrel at two oh five Eighteenth Road, and Odell Carter at two eleven Hammond Street.
I had the paperwork on both, need a motion?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Need a second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
Have an, uh, I think I put it up here, Mr. Wilson, it's a, uh, E. Leonard Nupside, the Rose Country Club. See the picture?
I did see the picture. Just coming. Is that old country club road?
Yeah.
I got a picture here. I got a picture of it. You got, was there paperwork too?
No, I just, uh, get it approved, then we go to a.
Okay.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gray.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, illegal dump site on Old Country Club Road.
Is this the same one?
They'll do a couple different areas. They'll do this one, we clean it. They'll do another, we clean it, then they back to them.
Okay, what is your?
Next thing I have, I told you last week, I've come before the board, we saw that sand, uh, during this winter storm, I've been doing some research and went and looked at the cities and all the spreader they have, uh, to spread that sand on their bridges and hills, which would cut our cost a lot. To do it, I do have, uh, some paperwork, uh, looking at it, and, uh, spreader's six thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars. Uh, ask the board to give me permission. I do have it in my account, in, uh, form an account, uh, either one sixty or one six, one sixty or the one fifty calling three hundred nine sixteen. But she can look and see, but indeed, I do have it in my budget, if the board give me permission for it, I have it.
All right, do we have, need a motion for that? Somebody buy that spreader? He's got some money in his.
He gonna, can you, can you look at it?
Yeah, let me look at it.
Huh?
Let me find it.
Well, we can move forward. I'll make a motion pending, uh, he do have funds in his account, uh, to buy the spread. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries?
Uh, if you get a chance to talk to the gentleman, might know your acres, uh, like Todd.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
I did not. Whether he, you want him to lower it?
The spillway's got to be lowered. It's affecting our roads, washing out, we're being, we're having a little bit of tanning water right there on the side, building it packed up and all. Like I said, the water comes on the road every time, you know, we get two, three inch rain.
Okay. I would call him. He shouldn't be too busy today with it, but I'm probably gonna have, we got to have something signed for that, uh.
He, he gonna have to, it's his spillway. It's his spillway.
Do we need a letter from him?
Right.
Authorizing us to?
No, we can't, we.
He's gonna, he's gonna do it, but I mean, if he says he's gonna do it, then he doesn't do it, what we gonna?
Attorney involved.
Uh, Mr. President, from what I'm looking at, nineteen-five, they were too safe. Get city code for five, the chief, one, two, about to clean and clear creeks on private property. So, what is it?
Ah.
It, it's causing a, a thick tile county road, so I don't know what to do.
Yeah, you still, you got to do process and.
Yeah.
You still wanted to agree to do it.
I'm calling, um.
The, the next statute over kinda tells you more of what you need to do to get permission, and you open it up for damages and you go on the interchanges. We do it, but it's process. You can get it done.
I think you do.
They're gonna go damage all over out of the county, and they tracking that lady sitting here and say that. I, I went on to, you know, ninety-five year old man said the same thing.
Next thing I have, uh, we were in Jackson, and, uh, he, he has a grant out there, uh, for limb trucks. I'm gonna ask the board if they need any permission to let they look into that grant.
I'm letting the board allow.
They're not needing a motion, but.
You know?
Yeah, you're gonna bring back to us.
I am, but I told you that I want the board to know what we're doing for the start. You know what, I, I'd just like to do that. So, uh, all right, and then the budget amendment, you have, who has the budget amendment? You got for four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and eighty-two cents? You had that?
Yes, sir.
Moving it from, uh, one fifty-six thirty-two to one fifty-six thirty-one?
Yeah, what is that?
That's sand we bought, four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars of sand we bought, uh, we didn't have the money, so we moved it from, uh, asphalt to gravel and chairs.
I'm talking about probably a big one. I'm two five acres up there. All right, that's why they send me. All right, do we need a motion for what?
Yes, please.
Okay, motion for the, uh.
For the amendment, for the budget amendment, for four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and eighty-two cents from, uh, one fifty-five at, uh, six thirty-two to one fifty to six thirty-one.
Okay, you make that motion.
I have a mandate motion.
You, you. I'll make the motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaines, need a second.
Same.
Seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Uh.
Okay.
All right, then we had to get a court order on, uh.
Motion carries?
Uh, they had to get a court order on sand for us. At Monday was the holiday, everything closed. We run out of sand at twenty something. But right at thirty, load the sand on hand, we had to buy a order from, uh, St. Cameron, and, uh, had to do a court order for three thousand nine hundred dollars for sand.
Was it not a declaration of emergency then?
It didn't, we didn't have an emergency.
We didn't have an emergency?
No, we didn't sign.
It is that one.
Well, Mr. Bradford didn't.
Mr. Bradford did sign, but, uh.
Gotcha.
Okay, we need a motion regardless. Okay, he's just telling us.
They let you know that.
Okay.
All right, next thing, uh, Mr. Wilson, it's a, uh, solid waste, uh, grant fund in front of you for twenty-two thousand six hundred sixteen dollars. Give it to that one.
Okay, I think.
Hugh, Rob, how much is, uh, court order?
Thirty-nine hundred, three thousand nine hundred dollars.
The one that says return to me. Yep, okay. We need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you sign it.
Okay, need a motion for the, uh.
Solid waste grant.
Solid waste grant.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Need a second. Seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you.
Silence is aggravating.
I think that's all I have. Uh, oh, I do have one thing. Scott, on the levy, I have to contact, to contact, and I don't know what, what, hey, about the levy or if they're gonna be at the last play. I said I couldn't answer that. Nothing?
On the. Delaware levy?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are, we're gonna bid it out?
I, I just, he contacted me this week, and I said I didn't know, I said I'd ask. Okay, that's all I got.
Think we have to.
Yeah.
I just have something for Rob. Robert, uh, Flower Road, um, it, uh, I got a call on Saturday. Uh, it's, we, we, we check this gravel road, said they need some gravel in the grave. And the next thing, uh, me and Robert already talked about, um, in, in the Bromo subdivision, uh, they have been, they dig up the pipe, they fish water line. They're responsible for putting our roads back in order, uh, like it's supposed to for, for payment. So in the process, they had, and I have a ton of, uh, calls, and right here in Bromo Drive, and Jeff and King Circle, where our main traffic gear, we have some potholes out. They, they don't really do justice. I took a picture of it yesterday morning in the rain. But they're propping eight to ten inches deep in this, the main traffic. And I didn't want, uh, so it's been kind of a little distraction, uh, with them filling the holes. So I want permission from the board, what give Robert, okay, so he won't be in a bind. We not gonna re-circus the street, but they're basically potholes like everywhere else. So they have to feel comfortable with coming out here and filling these holes until we can get with them to do it.
They go back in, they put sixteen on them. They put some sand at sixteen, with that sixteen gets beat out of, and I think what Mr. Gaines is asking for us is to continue to put sixteen in the hole until they get it blacktopped.
Yeah.
We, we get the calls. We can call them. We fought this battle. We've been fighting this battle. And they want blacktopped like they should, but it's continuing to call our office until supervisor, I think that's what you're asking, is everybody?
Yeah, I'm just asking them to not blacktop and be able to fill the hole.
We need to fill them with blacktop? We, we need to fill them with sixteen?
I mean, to fix it, Rob?
They need, they need, they need blacktop.
They're responsible, but we can't leave, we can't, you can't leave the holes, and I'm just asking, so they'll be, so we can't get clarified on that, on their end, that until we get the problem fixed up with Bromo Utilities, that we need to be able to fill those holes. That's all I'm asking. For satisfaction though.
Can we force them?
No, 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 Mr. President, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Are we filling holes? From the street, just getting holes, or they dug up a hole?
They dug up a hole.
So we got, we got something in place right now. Just like the natural water work, when they dig up a hole, they are responsible for going back and filling that hole.
Yeah, we've been there. We've been in there.
You gonna open up cane worms? You, you gonna ask everybody that digging up holes, we ain't ready to go out there and, and buy, do we buy this stuff?
No, this is what we put out like today. I'm not asking to buy anything. Asking, I don't know, you might not be getting no calls with this on Bromo back.
I, I, I tried to put me on Facebook for that.
Well, that's what I'm checking for.
Let me ask you a question.
Did we buy sixteen yesterday?
We paying for sixteen, you go out there and it ain't gonna last because the rain gonna wash it out.
Right.
It, those people are responsible for filling the hole back correctly. If we start doing this, we gonna have to do it all over this county.
Okay, well, let's do this then. We're, I'm gonna ask the attorneys, please, contact these people, write them a letter, so we want, if they're supposed to do it in a timely manner. I don't know what timely means, or if that's how that's written down.
I think it's seven days.
Well, they're, they're a week, yes, or seven days.
We go to board meeting, we've been to their meeting, Mr. Gaines been there, uh, Mr. Butler was there prior to Mr. Gaines. This ain't all, it just started today.
It ain't start, so this is what I'm asking board. Mr. Gray, I'm asking, so you say we opened up a can of worms, but when it, when, when it rains, potholes.
I think I have one more phone.
Potholes come in our road everywhere, all across our county road. I'm not asking to go in and blacktop the road. All I'm asking, until we can come up with a term or something, can we fill those holes to get a relevant, some relief with what we already have, what we put out on a database for potholes?
I'm telling you.
That's what I'm asking. Not do nothing special, not bother, can we fill the holes to get a relevant, some relief, because even though Bromo Utilities is not payment, you got all those relatives, it's, it's, we patch holes on a database when we get calls from everybody else. And I mean, people got nice vehicles and expensive vehicles, all I'm asking is to give Robin some clarification, can they, when they in Bromo patching the other streets, can they, and they see these holes, it would be okay for him and the patch?
Uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Middleton say what he's gonna say, and I'll pitch you, Ms. Hutchins.
I, I understand both sides of it. I understand you get fault cops, Bromo Utility does, and I understand supervisor Gray's side of it also. If we continue to patch them and fix them, Bromo Utilities is never gonna take any responsibility for it. So we gotta have something to put teeth in this deal, to make them abide by that seven-day deal and take care of what they tear up. You can. I mean, we have to. Charge the cost of that.
Do they, they bond, are they bonded? We have a bond on them or anything? Uh, okay, so we can pa, we can patch them if we want to and just send them a bill?
That's part of the damages, if it's passed in seven days.
Or, or you should, you can.
Cause I give them a time limit of when you gotta fix, or when you cut into a county road, you have X amount of time to fix it, or you're in violation of ordinance. That damages us, when if we had to go just for the safety of property or safety of people, you know, we, that's what I believe supervisor Gaines asked.
We used to fix them and send them a bill, and then they cut that out, because, because we forced them and kept on going on, and they used to pay us. But they said we would charge, we weren't charged, we were paying X amount of money as Mr. Hendy, whoever went in and fixed it, and we, we didn't want to eat that. I mean, we just fixed it where we wouldn't have to call, but they showed us that, and they said they don't take care of their own. And they done this a year or two ago, and they don't want us to fix the holes, and they're charging.
Well, they don't have a choice. Go ahead.
Same thing happened on Wendy Hill. Remember, we had that fall on Wendy Hill with them running pipes and everything, the same situation. It was that, the line cut, they had cut the street, and all, we didn't pay, we couldn't fix that. They had to go back and fix them themselves. There's nothing you can do that the rest of the year to drive on that road. And T, I think it was the waterworks or somewhere, Adams County Water went there and fixed that hole.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we could not. This, this been what, maybe, um, three? It's, huh?
Oh, no.
Oh, they, they really took care of it. When we told them that that had to be taken care of, they really went off to care.
We were having trouble with some little pipeline and those.
Yeah. Busted pipes.
Okay, uh.
If I only grab them like that, they gonna do it.
Mr. Slower, what do you, are you gonna write a letter, call them, or tell them, should we go ahead and do temporary patches with eighteen in charge for that? And send them a bill and see what happens? I don't like, I don't like people of tires, though.
They've been there six months to a year.
Yeah.
Not with asphalt, we just. But they can, he can keep up with what they use if we're allowed it. The one, running some guys here.
The one on King Circle been there over a year, right?
Correct.
Right out of here. The one that's in Bromo Drive, the one that's getting the major complaint, the one that's really horrible, I guess, what has been there six months?
It's been there several months.
Four to six months.
Yeah, it's been there several months.
Four to six months.
Before they fix it, but yeah, it's been there several months.
Yeah. Cause it's, it's been, it's been, huh?
Why's it just come to the wall?
Because they, they have been, it, they have been, probably have been.
Cause it didn't rain.
They have, they have.
Didn't rain for you.
They had, well, let me, let me explain to you. We had a really dry summer, and so when you fill it up and you don't have no rain, it holds. We had a really red one, so now, but when they driving, now it's coming, now you, it, it's coming up. And, uh, so it, and it's really got real horrible, oh, and I mean, it, it's really hard, but if you drive out through there and your vehicle and you hit it, you'll see. It'll, it'll, and why I brought it to the board and asked to do something about it, because I'm, I mean, you know, a little bit of bump, these people gonna complain. But when you hit a bump that will make you change lane, it don't get real, till your family come around and carry it, and you could have put some pad there. So I can't say that, but it's designed, all I'm trying to do is save somebody's life, because it's, it's literally bad enough, uh, on Bromo Drive, right there by, what is that? Uh.
High heel.
High heel. It, it's literally bad enough, if you hit that bump on the edge, it'll push you another lane. So I have had several calls, and I know one thing, I do stand up here, I just want my people to know, that I try to represent them to the point, we can't fix everything, but I can never replace a life. So if asphalt or path or saving a life, I willing to stick my neck out to try to get that done.
He's looking up the ordinance, see how we can tackle that.
It's a seven-day, you give them seven-day notice, and they're out and polishing the ordinance.
And we can, we can fix them.
So we fixing to charge them after the seven days.
Now, the question I guess we need to ask is, do we gonna want them fixing back to sixteen and not do the blacktop? Because we're gonna be hung out there to dry if we do all the blacktopping. Then, then if they don't do it, the blacktopping, then we're gonna do that, and they're gonna pay us.
The sixteen ain't gonna let, because this granite sixteen ain't gonna let, if we don't fix it, we wasn't fixing this.
We don't have anybody that's gonna jump in here and fix it in six, seven days.
Clarification, after seven days, we fix it, charge them, see how that works out?
You gotta give them seven days' notice, and it's a violation of the ordinance, and so if that's part of the damages of the ordinance, and we have them, you know, arrested, and we'll keep our fees and that, and we can get that money.
Let me, let me clarify this. So when we say fix them, cause you know, these are folks I represent, and I ain't got a problem with charging folks. So are we gonna charge these folks to fix it, or you gonna charge these folks to patch it? Because if you patch it, it's gonna happen repetitive over and over again. So I just need clarification on what we doing, and what's your recommendation, uh, Mr. Rowe, man?
Can, can we go patch it with sixteen immediately? Get a bill sent to them with the letter and say, we, we did this, and you're gonna pay us for this, and, and you, and you got, you got to do the asphalt.
You say if you don't fix this in seven days, we're gonna do these things to you.
That, we're, we're gonna asphalt it. Uh, cause right now, it's, uh, it's already a hazard, and we, waiting seven more days is not gonna do a whole lot of good for these people that have to drive this everything. So can we, can we send them a bill for pick Dixon with sixteen? It, it has to be fixed that way anyway. They can't just go blacktop. It has to be. So can we, can we send them a bill for pick, Dixon with six-ten, it, it has to be fixed that way anyway, they can't just go blacktop, it has to be.
Yeah.
Six-ten's gotta be put back in, let people run on it, pack it back in, then it's ready for the blacktop. I, I mean, you see what I'm saying? Can we do that?
Send me this, we'll do it, and then like I said, once I'll get with Bravo, tell them after every patch that they're gonna do, they got seven working days to get it done.
They know, they know that it's not doing, so we gotta.
Once it's, once it's, give them seven day notice, and they don't fix it, every seven days after that is another violation of the ordinance, which is a fine of up to a thousand dollars, so they're already punit if that's.
But, but my question, it's no seven days, no seven days, no seven days, if I fix it in that seven days.
So can he do a emergency patch on all the potholes, or not?
Not eating that pot.
I'm not, no, he's gonna take six-ten and fix all the holes that are beat out so bad that people are dropping eight to ten inches, but this has to be done anyway.
I don't have a problem fixing potholes, but we can't fix when they go cut into that road.
That's not what I'm asking you, I'm asking him to be able to go out there with his crew and go put six-ten in there to get those knocked out for now, and meantime, he sends a letter to them and say, you got seven days.
They say you can't do that, you got to send the letter first, give them seven days.
They'd come in violation after the letter.
That's right.
Does y'all gonna make it?
How many potholes each, I'm, I'm.
Well, this, this, this on, uh, there's only two major spots that we have to complain about, so, but, but we pass potholes, but these are roads that they, cause I'm like.
For, for the short term, can we authorize him to go out there and pick them, and fix those with some six-ten to get that seven days clear, taken care of?
Absolutely.
We could do that.
Yeah.
Do we, we need a motion for that, or we just gonna?
No, I have to get a patcher. He patched it.
Okay, Robbie, you got what we need?
I got it.
Okay, one question.
Send him that letter again, Mr. Slower, please.
If you get, if you get the letter ready.
First time, I've never sent them a letter.
If you get the letter ready, you call me and I'll sign, if I need to sign. Um, yes.
Just for clarification purposes. So anytime they cut a road, we have to send them a letter that, when they cut that road?
If they hadn't fixed it back like they're supposed to, you give them notice to fix it, and if they don't, then they're in violation of an ordinance.
So as soon as you see that it's starting to be a problem, we need to get the letter.
We've never had to do it, except for like a handful of times, because most people, as soon as you commit contact and they fix the.
They don't wanna do it, but like I said, they wouldn't, then they got what they want paid us, they said, you know, we don't wanna do that, we gonna fix that off, so they do that, but we do the. Same thing with five.
Okay, you already, you're on five, alright.
Most of the time, they do what they're supposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Robbie, um, eight sixty-one Kingston Road. The, uh, I don't know if there's a, a call or what, what's going on there, I, I, he didn't make any sense, but if he could up that and see whether there's a hole or something. Okay, um, departmental reports? Yes, sir, how you doing?
I'm doing well, I, I don't have much, I just wanted to, first, let me go and get this out of the way, um, we have a utility request from Ceasefire to install fiber to one seventy-six Foster Mall Road, they will start the intersection, steam plant, and travel along Foster Mall and tie into one seventy-six, uh, Foster Mall Road.
Okay, um, we need a motion for that? Moved by, uh, Mr. Middleton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines?
Who was that Ceasefire?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Done.
Uh, motion carries.
Um, rest, um, rest of it is just, um, updates, uh, new projects, and Fort State A was submitted, waiting on response back, hopefully we can go and get that project started, and, um, still working on Morgan Town Road. And our annual maintenance will be this Wednesday at eight AM, that's our annual maintenance for our Fort State A.
Wednesday?
Wednesday. So, should have gotten the letter. So that will be Wednesday, the seventh. Um, following that meeting, we will get a report back from State A about, uh, different maintenance items like we do every year. After that, I will take that list and generate a, I guess, proposal for each site or each road that they have a recommendation for. And we can use up the, uh, or you can use it, choose to use available State A funds to remit any of those items they, they brought up from state maintenance.
Here at eight AM, right.
More than likely, he's wanting one of me here.
Hot?
More than likely, he wants me to address that.
I thought it was later.
The board wants to hear.
Yeah, said here with the letters, but we'll meet there, where you want to meet?
That's an official, that's just official, because you have the state, Adam County Board of Supervisors, but every time we meet, it's a part of it, because I only keep it right on road manager mindset or state. Of course, the supervisor is willing to ride along, but specifically, it's a ride along with the road manager mindset or state.
Alright.
Um, are there any questions coming along?
The usual. What's going on with Burke Road, and, uh, are we still waiting on the?
On Burke Road, and once I can get, once we can get in hand a temporary easement from the wildlife, all I have to do is submit a right of way certification with that document attached to State A and say, we kind of have a right of way, right, right, um, State A to say, y'all have authorization to have the top project, and then that money, that money from the flat will have to be pulled down, there'll be coordination between MDOT and State A, but, um, for the Indiana portion of it.
Who, who's tying that up, who's, who needs to sign that?
Whoever we're trying to figure.
I know, but who with wildlife fish, I mean.
They were told, Wes said that they were waiting on me to do something, I was like.
They waited on me.
Last one, no, US Wildlife Fish. They're, they're supposed to propose a temporary driveway to, to let the project start, they're, they're claiming they're.
And you, you already asked them, and they sent it up there?
Immediately emailed them saying, what are you waiting for?
Who?
Like, I'm Georgia, too.
We got a number to carve?
I know, we've been begging for it, answered every silly question they've had. This is a project they asked us to do, and help us get funding, and we can't get from that.
Okay.
It doesn't sense.
Dead and war, okay, is that all?
That's all, I really appreciate you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, ma'am. I'll be very short.
No, I'm all dinner.
You should have three new cars, Mr. President.
Yes.
Control, uh, Lyndale Minor, a Sedgert Green, and a Tyrini Berry. All three of those will be for deputy, uh, on patrol, rate of sixteen eighty-one.
Alright, Lyndell, Lyndell Minor. Patrick, Lyndell, it's not Lyndell, huh?
Lyndell, that's correct.
Lyndell, okay.
These are all the classic deputies?
Green and Tyrini Berry. All at sixteen eighty-one, annual rate of thirty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and eight cents. Need a motion to?
I have a motion to high those, we have sixteen eighty-one, but I report death.
Seconded by Mrs. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
All opposed.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Uh, two other quick things, uh, on Friday, excuse me, this Friday, our, we have a guy that is in K nine school right now, we returned the bloodhound, uh, about a month and a half ago, we got another K nine, and, uh, he's another dual purpose dog, so he will be on the road and certified on Friday. So at that point in time, we'll have two dual purpose K nines out on patrol. And then the last thing I have is, for the next few weeks or so, sheriff will be out on baby leave, they haven't had the baby yet, they didn't deuce uh, last night, but as of, by fifteen minutes, they still haven't had the baby, so, uh, once that happens, he'll, he'll be out for a little bit, so anything y'all need, feel free to call me.
Will you officially be acting sheriff?
Don't start, please don't start.
I mean, somebody else would bound to have that question in her head.
I, I will be fielding phone calls and answering complaints. So is there any other questions or anything I can, I can help the board with?
Anybody have any questions, uh, the, the, the acting sheriff? Departmental reports, anybody else? Okay. I guess you're up, sir, Mr. Stokes is it?
Yes, it is. Good afternoon, um, I'm just here to actually, uh, with, uh, attorney, what is the status about how you?
Yes, sir, now, I had a firm audit report, as I was telling you, we went back and investigated Mr. Stokes, uh, and I sent an email about it to all y'all about what the report back from LaShay was, uh, we are able, based on attorney's general's opinions, to credit people uh, or ensure refund for sanitation, we found that they were, you know, erroneously done, um, water was not hooked up on, that's what LaShay found back, um, actually said back that they, she asked the garbage people, that they said that within the last year, they hadn't been picked up, and that they were picking it up before that, but the board wants to credit them back, it's certainly within the authority to do that.
And how much are we talking about?
It would have been fifteen dollars a month from the time that he filed his, uh, from three years from the time he filed his petition for adoption. Be the next one she'd go, I know that LaShay said she'd already credited him back, maybe eight months.
She's already credited him back eight months?
Eight months, but he's asking for, his responses, he hasn't had it in ten.
I haven't had, I, I don't know nothing about the eight month credit.
That's what she said back to me, but.
The last time I was in there was this year, and that's when, uh, uh, she told me I didn't have to pay, uh, in January. She didn't accept it, because she didn't realize that, uh, uh, I was being, uh, erroneously charged.
That's probably why she had already given you some credit back.
Well, that was just for that month.
Ah, she told me in the email it was eight months.
Last year, in other words, I was paying for D seven. So each month, I don't know about.
It's fifteen dollars a month.
But I'm asking, what's, he asking for, how much is the price, he asking for?
He's asking, most of what we can give.
A hundred, a hundred and eighty dollars for three years.
I came up with, uh, if I took that eight months off, I came up with four hundred and twenty dollars.
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen no credit for eight months.
If it's, if the board's order is three months from the time he did his petition, then.
Three years.
I'm sorry, pre-year, from the time he did his petition, he would have included that, by the word of that.
So I need a motion to say we, we can reimburse him for, for whatever amount it is for three years, you're gonna state the date.
I, I'll make the motion to reimburse, uh, from the legal, uh, I mean, to, to, the brand it is accounted.
Do you want to specify the dollar amount?
Yeah, according to the.
Five hundred and forty dollars, last eight months.
I came up with four twenty.
Yeah, I'm gonna award it, so he doesn't get eight, three months, three years plus.
Yeah, okay. I make the motion.
Alright, seconded by, uh, Mr. Gray, any more discussion? All in favor?
I just wanna make one thing clear, though, because I'm hearing about eight months that I don't know about.
Any day?
Don't worry about it.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously? That, he's gonna, he's gonna figure out the amount, and I, I, I couldn't tell you the dollar amount, because when you talking about, hey, this month, that was thirty-five dollars, not fifteen, so. Anyway, they'll take care of it.
I meant D seven, though, one other thing while I'm here, I've noticed that the lady was here looking for to be credited back, uh, husband, attorney, and a, a bond, and I, I want the same thing, because what happened was, I was here one time before, concerning my son, and I think we was discussing about the attorney that had been visiting him, and to come to find out that he was wrongfully incarcerated, you know, and I, I, I just was wondering about that attorney fee, because I think you told, you all told the lady that she can't get that money back, once it was found out, the case was dismissed. Scott, you know anything about that?
I'd have to go back and look at the attorney fee, whether that's reimbursed or not, depending on your assessment. But I would believe that would mean go to the court that were dismissed the case, you can go back and say expungement and return the fees if there's any, I'm not sure if they're, they can do the attorney or not, I mean, if they're ready, they should, should be able to charge attorney if you don't end up convicting, but like I said, I don't know, and, and I don't know if Shane happens to know either on top of his head, but.
One other thing, and I'm gonna stop talking crap, uh, uh, I'm asking the board, because the board is the one to do it, I asked the clerk, and I asked the sanitation department whether they had an application to opt out of the ga, uh, the garbage, uh, uh, system, garbage collecting system. And the thing that I wanted to do, because I'm looking at it, and I say, well, thirty-five dollars a month, and a valid use, use the two days, and when you do put something in the trash cans, I mean, you got a little old garbage bag, and uh, I'm trying to balance my, uh, budget too, just like you all are, and what I'm asking the board to do is, uh, or come up with some type of, uh, uh, requirement under the law, I think it's nineteen five twenty-one, where one can opt out from that garbage collection, uh, system, when it's not necessary for them to even have it, that's, that's a big deal throughout the year, they can go somewhere else.
Um, I don't know what the rules are, the attorney might be able to tell you that, but I do know this, that every board meeting is about, we got an eligible dump site that comes up, because maybe somebody doesn't wanna pay it or whatever, they, and they, they're throwing stuff in, in the ditches and the bays, and we're, we're having to clean it up all the time, so, uh, we have to supply waste management to everybody, so, uh, I don't like paying it either, but I don't even use it.
Well, it's not that I don't like it, I enjoy it.
I'm gonna tell you, I don't like it.
I was entitled to do it, and I was doing it wrongfully, but it's not like that, I'm just asking for some relief right now. Uh, because it's in law for me to have the opportunity to ask the board to let me opt out of that project.
It's discretionary to the board of supervisors to decide if they wanna have somebody to opt out or not, but the board, or, I mean, just for logistics, it would be very difficult to actually implement, because there's more to that garbage heap than just curbside services, there's the convenience stations, there's the disposal services and so forth, and plus the billing, how we're charged by our contractor, it's not on our rates or on our subscribers, it's based on how many households they're offering, and they'll, we could get billed, even though you're not paying your fees and so forth, but, you know, that's, it is, within the authority of the board to do that, the board has never done that.
I'm just talking about one individual, me, or whatever.
And if you're, you gotta, for everybody, because it's gotta be a policy that everyone can apply.
Out of curiosity, what would you do with your garbage?
I'd do a little work up there as a store, the man has no problem, he told me, and I have to give his, uh, written permission on a letter and bring it to you.
Well, uh, I know a lot of people would say, well, I'm gonna burn it, but what you gonna do during the burn?
They got big dumps to them.
There was four months of cooking.
Bag up there and get rid of it.
It's just that, like I said, it's a discretionary thing, we're, and, and we're not obligated to do it, uh, but anyway, they are gonna refund your money, you know, for the last three years.
I was asking for consideration of that, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, y'all take care of it.
Mr. Dollar.
Mr. Slower, you'll get with me on that?
Hopefully I won't have to get, hopefully we'll get it done, and you'll, you'll be good to go, so, but you've always been very easy to deal with, so, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Alright.
Alright, Mr. Dollar.
Tire Grant Reimbursement, make this center over, this guy, uh, three thousand one hundred and seven dollars.
From Mississippi environment, environmental quality, tire ran three thousand twenty-four dollars?
Yeah.
Three thousand one oh seven.
Three thousand one oh seven.
Okay, I need a, uh, motion. Moved by Mr. Middleton? Seconded by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, public comment? Took care of that, you know what public comment? Alright, um, I'm assuming we have several items to be determined, or we got to, to come to the table, I'm sorry, uh, there's something I have for you, uh, I'm gonna remember those, Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, Scott, we gonna set up a plumb with, uh, George to, uh, Scott, we gonna set up a program with, uh, George to, uh, deal with that issue on Morgan Town Road about getting that driveway from Winston. And, uh, it's that time of year again where your donations is very needed to, uh, deal with this scholarship fund that we, uh, have with the city and supposed, I mean, with the county and supposed to be with the city. Robert Thirteen Grapton, uh, it's bad out there again, with erosion, the big rain.
It is. I might look at Gray, and, uh, right there in the front where he had that water leak written, and he fixed it, and he got all that fixed, it's washing right back there again, but it's in the side, so it is.
Back, back there too.
Yeah, right there by the concrete.
Uh, Scott, so we're planning, where are we with the, uh?
You good to go? I emailed Workfoot, Angela Thursday or Friday.
He's good to go?
Sure he's good to go, yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to move the page back in.
Yes, sir.
I, I read on one of my emails, a letter of demand, we gonna deal with that in that session or something.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, and I also saw somewhere, uh, Southwest planning, uh, Ms. Smith is asking us to contact Delta Bank to see would they enroll in the SNAP program?
Yes, I've been talking with, uh, Delta Bank, trying to get them to enroll on, uh, the guy I'm talking to, I wanted to talk to Alainette, just briefly explain it, and then he'll have to contact, whatever that, that agency is, so they're happy to do it, they just don't wanna have a lot of work to do on top of it. I think that, you know, I feel like Southwest does a lot of the work on those SNAP grants and home grants, so I think that was the problem, they did it before with a different, different grant rider in Atlanta, because they got stuck doing a bunch of stuff, and, you know, they wanna help and part of the community, but didn't wanna be saddled with, you know, keeping up with applications and that kind of thing. I think it'll work out real good.
Uh, last, um, huh, we doing a lot of reparation around here for, it's, um, getting the parks right or whatever the case may be, and, uh, I did say a little league baseball back in the day, but we, we getting our facilities right for baseball, but I have some concern. I got friends across the river, and all of our kids are going across the river and doing everything for, especially, we, we, we do small basketball leagues. That's the reason I fought so hard when I was with the city, but they wouldn't sell my gym. Now the kids don't have nowhere to go but outside. And you can see the difference in our basketball programs, because, uh, basketball is no different from baseball, rodeoing, or whatever the case may be. You can't wait till you all little grown and start playing basketball. You got to pick up a ball at, at a early age, like to pick up a baseball, or ride a horse, or whatever the case may be. So, uh, I just guess I'm gonna take it on my own to get with the city, to see what their plans are, because I've seen something in the newspaper where they was talking about signing up for, uh, baseball. And I don't have a problem with that, but we cannot neglect the kids that wanna play basketball, and that's what we doing right now, because all of them are going across the river. I don't think that's a good idea. Last, my sympathy goes out to the Johnson, Hickambottom Beach, Yuri Campbell, Tucker, Smith, Washington, Madison, Bowman, and Fleming family. And we did get some packages that takes in Washington DC, uh, I think you did these, Rob? Thank you, man, because, uh, it's easier to talk about something and show people something than just go up there and talk, and they don't have no idea what we talking about, so. We do have some to get them and pray that we get some, uh, uh, funding for these projects, and, um, this game, supervisor game, and road manager and, 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 uh, our attorney, could y'all get together? Because I'm not gonna be here, I don't know, are y'all gonna be here for the neighborhood watching Morgan Town? And it's on the second Monday at six o'clock, and, uh, they haven't had an update on Morgan Town Road, and they asking for an update, and I'm not gonna be here. So if, if you got busy, or Robbie, or Scott, or somebody need to go out there and, uh, get an update on Morgan Town Road, and that's the money for you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Okay, um, what I have here, Bobby, um, are you all dragging the ditches? Have y'all started dragging the ditches? Yeah, with, with the leaves and everything, because we have a lot of drainage problem with the, those coves backing up on the leaves and everything.
We had, you know, full summer, we just went around and pulled them out.
Yeah, and we stopped.
Supers, supers, I don't mean to cut you off, as long as people gonna cut their grass and grow all their leaves in, in, in where the drainage is, we gonna continue to have problems with drainage, because see like me, I see it all over the city now. Somebody cut their grass, they blow all this stuff all out of the street, and it go right into the, I ain't gonna cut y'all.
If we can get on this, you know, some of, some of just on the leaves falling from the trees, right here, that has been, you know, the leaves off the trees now. See if we can get some of the ditches dragged as many as we can. Um, another thing else, I talked to Ms., uh, Washington this morning, in regards to the appropriations for the business that City believes, um, if we can go ahead and give that appropriations for their banquet that's coming up soon, go ahead and make that donation, I think it's about a thousand dollars.
A donation.
I mean, not donation, appropriations for that, uh, I did speak with that.
Any motion to find that that is, uh, a proper advertisement of the services and, uh, of the community and whatnot?
Okay, that's.
Falls in that appropriation section.
That's the platinum.
Right.
Eight, eight tickets.
Right.
Had it six P M on March first.
You get a speaking, which is me.
Yeah, we should be favorable like the possibility.
Used to be, due to weather. All right, nothing else.
Okay, we need a motion to?
No.
Yeah.
We do need a motion.
Yes, that's next word, as you say, you get.
So move, second, second.
Angela, who has a second, about Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Motion carried.
Next thing is that trash cleanup on Duck Pond, I know you all took care of it. Um, have you all went back to spoke with the lady about top it?
I had been by the steam, by the one we were there, and I said, you'd like to think that that big plastic thing right there.
Okay, we're gonna have to do something there, yeah, because the dogs are getting in there, and I, I feel like the county should have to clean up some of the trash from the dogs getting in there, so make sure they get a top of it, if not, we need to find a way that they'll be fine if they're trash. So that's another thing we need to take care of, and, uh, that's all of that.
All right, thank you.
Well, back, um, start, uh, picture what Ms. Hutchins left out, I first wanna say, uh, Sheriff's Department, um, I thank y'all for trying to answer all those calls I've been getting lately, because trash been everywhere, and I've been in touch with maybe services here, they're doing a good job to actually get it up, but I do understand by the time they get it up, it's back down, because I know I had to go through Morgan Town and Steam Plant, and I had a call last week about picking it up, and I told, had to show them where they just picked it up a week ago. But the sheriff, um, is not here, and we had talked about investing in maybe a tag reader for garbage out. I mean, I'm pretty much sure garbage is through all our areas, and I mean, you know, I'm just gonna put it back on our mind. Um, and I know we're in a tight budget restraint, but garbage is something that's really, really bad. If he would get a price, if we couldn't get five like we talked about, I think that is something will be well used. And until we can probably start catching people that littering and giving them tickets, I think it's gonna get worse and worse, so I just wanted to bring that back to the attention of the board, and, uh, that, uh, ends my report, uh, Mr. President.
Mr. President, that's the moment I got myself, uh, while we was at the Midland Conference, I talked to the municipal department of human service. I don't know if you spoke with them, Ms. Washington, and, okay, I'm gonna give this to you and Scott, this is some information, and this is some federal funding out there, uh, that we can get, and it would help us maintain the, uh, Department of Human Service. So I'm gonna give you this information, this is something new that the governor has, uh, approved July first of twenty twenty-three, so, yeah, just pass it out.
All right, Mr. Gaines had something.
Um, and then I'm also for the sheriff, uh, I know, uh, while I was at the conference, House deal twelve twenty-two, and I'm pretty much sure y'all aware of dealing with Milton Health, it, it requires now all law enforcement officers to be Milton Health certified, and I know the sheriff's being, uh, all his officers being certified, and also requires that all Milton patients are to be transported by law enforcement, but they do have money for free training for liaison, for the sheriff's department, I mean, our law enforcement, so I just wanted to bring that out so you hire new hires. Uh, at this time, they do have money available, and they have places throughout the state set up for law enforcement to be trained, I think they said maybe eight hours or so, but, uh, if, um, I will give with you and try to get you some numbers, I had a PowerPoint, I had to follow them on, and I will give with you, so maybe if you have some people need to be certified, because by a lot of not, everybody's gonna have to be Milton Health certified.
Excuse me, that's the same people that does our crisis intervention training?
Yeah.
Um, we have six on the road right now that are trained, one of them is a trainer. One of our goals for this year is to have every road officer CIT certified, so we're actually trying to take it a step further than the, uh, state requirements.
All right, well, thank you, you on top, but I just wanted to bring that information back.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Middleton.
Uh, you know, I've touched, I've talked around about everything I had, the only other thing I wanna bring up is the scoreboard was delivered, I think about a week and a half ago for Chester Willis, who y'all were Jackson, and, uh, the road department has volunteered to put that up for us, which is gonna be a big say against the county. And I believe Mr. Wisner, uh, has, has offered his services to assist, just to lift it in no charge, so, uh, I just wanna thank Robbie for stepping up and helping us out on this little situation. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, uh, Ms. Dean? Uh, there you go.
It's a record. Oh, I just wanted to have the January bill tracking report for the sheriff's office spread across the minutes.
What's the amount on that?
Uh, I will, I can give it to y'all.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, settled by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Mr. Sloan.
The time for the legal personal property taxes, um, we can start with board permission sending out letters saying, hey, you know, some of them are above threshold, we're worthless, just touching base with them, ask them actually to go pay, um, if not, we can look at filing suit, collect some of that money, and some of these are really bigger amounts, not just your small amounts. But it's actually not a bad, not a bad year, but I have the board permission. Some of the personal property taxes, adult taxes are in rear from twenty twenty-two, and also bridge up to some of the bigger ones, the ones that kind of break the ten thousand dollar barrier, and say, hey, which is not a lot, it's, it seems to be less than we normally do, um, but you got a couple.
You need permission to do that?
I just want, I was like, more permission so you know it's, I'm contacting my behalf of y'all, so I want y'all to give me permission.
Who, who, uh, Ms. Hutchins?
No, no.
No, oh, Mr. Gray, I'm sorry. All right, Mr. Gaines, second, any, any discussion? All in favor? Got an item that's been determined, uh, this, uh, Washington.
In regards to Mr. Lee's request for the, um, purchase of the six thousand, uh, spray, fan spray.
Six thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Six thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars, um, they do have nothing one feet, if you want to do my sixteen to cover that, so.
Okay, we already made a vote, in, yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, I do have a Moscow invoice, um, I have the C C for two hundred and sixty thousand for materials for Chester Willis.
Okay, that's the loose part of the block?
No, I didn't, no, I didn't.
I think the board may bring that October.
Still waste part just on the line, I think.
Yeah, do you know what it is?
So it's already approved?
Uh, I'm done, well, I think it's been October, November. October the second.
Okay.
Yes, that's I get it, it's great. Yes, they were the sole source vendor for purchasing the stadium lot in Chester Willis, that was October, yeah, October second. I think we're good.
And then, and it was for Joseph Herr, for, um, sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. This was dated on the third year. So this was after, I couldn't put it on back yet, I just wanted to make sure I had permissions to pay for this one.
Yeah, you submit it to be docketed, you can work it, approve it or not.
And then I had two invoices from computer consultants for your review, if you actually want your review.
We'll pass these around and then we'll send them for docketing.
Okay. Anything else? That concludes your report. All right, you go ahead. Raise it to me. All right. This is one where I think it's, Scott, you might, this is a travel voucher, it's on a travel voucher form, Larry Gardner paid two hundred and twenty-five dollars for, uh, a scooter for, I guess, two or three days while they were a conference for, um, which, uh, employee?
It's for, uh, Ms. Bailey.
Ms. Bailey? While they were a conference, you needed one of those scooters to go around in, inside a casino, so he paid for it with his own money, and I don't know, it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars. You found it, I, I, that the casino didn't just furnish one, but.
They asking that that be free, that we, we reimburse them, him for that.
Mr. Gardner personally?
I think that's something she's always gotten, uh, has she been, yeah, I don't know if we can legally do that, but.
So she says that their treasurer usually fills out all of their paperwork for them, and they have a new treasurer, so that treasurer.
Left that all, out, run the paperwork this time, but that's something they've always got.
You need to check on it.
Okay, well, he can check on that one.
I think that's something she has.
We, we're gonna do a motion, we're gonna do a motion, in, you know, in. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by, this is a game, uh, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, motion carried.
All opposed.
All opposed?
Yeah, if they don't say aye, and you didn't do oppose, if no one raises a yes.
Well, if, uh, I'd like to hear them say aye.
But law just says if they don't speak up, then.
All right, open meetings, advertising for county, has a mitigation plan, do we need a motion to?
And Gary did that, the advertising.
You need, you need that, that's out mine.
What they're docketing.
That's what they wanna do.
It's gonna be on the next docket.
On the next docket, that's the deal.
All right, I need a motion for travel from, uh, Angela to Hattiesburg. And the registration fee for that, I guess. Hotel. And then also, is anybody else on that? Okay, and for Mr. Gray, uh, travel Hattiesburg to, uh. Uh, travel Hattiesburg to uh.
Subway.
April nine through twelve. Uh, moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by?
Gray.
Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any days? Motion. But I I need to sign. Get that one. All right, is that part of that same thing?
He's got, we get twenty-three dash fifteen dash one.
All right. Got a travel voucher for Robbie Dollar.
Twenty-three fifteen what?
Where we going, Robbie?
Uh, I have that.
Robbie and me, I didn't, we never got signed.
Yeah.
Didn't have to be approved, don't need to sign. All right, I think that's, that's all that we did. Motion carried there, oh. Mr. Middleton gave me my number, they was no problem whatsoever. But I was, I spent three hours underneath a mobile home with parent water leaks, they'd been without water for two weeks. This is, this is in a trailer park, Mr. Middleton gave some, I mean, I'm not gonna call the name, but anyway.
You obviously need to be on Google, 'cause that's where she found mine. She asked if I had her supervisor's number, luckily, it was, it was the day before your birthday.
Was sad at all, and so I did it on my birthday, so that's okay too. So anyway, he got me out, he got me out to the trailer park. Not that I haven't rode through there a few times, but my God, just like a war zone. I know that private property, I assume it is, or do we own any, uh, any of the roads maintained by the county out there? Easy Street, any of those roads?
No.
Michael Avenue, right, Front Street.
One there, we're going to line.
Red.
No.
I I don't know if the health department needs to be called, or what, the trash out there, that little bit of trash you saw? That's in front, over side, every mobile home in that whole trailer park. He's not conducting trash pickup anymore, he's shutting the water off all the time, he's got rousers leaking out on the ground. Mr. Slow, any suggestions about what the county needs to do? This is, these people living in some really difficult, that used to be a decent place, but now, and I think they called the, one of the streets, it's not, it's Michael Avenue, they call it Meth Alley. Oh, now.
Sheriff can provide to you.
So I'm just, I'm just curious, I mean, I I hate to see people living like that, and most of them can't afford what's going on, and this lady, just to finish up what I was talking about, the freeze broke her water line, so he shuts the water off, 'cause he supplies it. And uh she's been without water for two weeks. Mobile home park, so I went out there and and a buddy of mine helped me, and three hours later, eight weeks later, we got it fixed. But I don't know how many other people out there are going without water, and the garbage is piling up all over the place.
Talking about out there on the highway?
Plantation mobile home.
Yeah, there's two people that moved away from my business.
Uh. It 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 it's terrible, but I I just didn't know if there's anything or any agency we can call and say, look, he needs to get this up to code of some kind, or who's even over there.
Mr. President, uh, we, you you probably could ask the person they call you, uh, uh, are they on the hood or are they just paying cash money to them? But if they on the hood, they got guidelines that he got.
They're paying, they're paying cash money, rent to own or 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 whatever, that's where he got them on this, if you sign rent to own. And your water leak, it's on you.
Yeah.
And uh, and she she signed a lease with an air conditioner, and somebody stole the air conditioning unit, so she doesn't know air conditioning very much. I I hate that Adams County has situations going, I know it's all over the county, why people can't afford this lady, just said, I can get nine hundred fifty dollars a month. I can't pay a plumber to come over and charge a thousand dollars to do this. So anyway, it's just, I I just don't know what what he can say about this. But the uh, the rest of the things, I think we've already talked about, I called Bob Simmons, uh, a- about that other, um, and uh those, the the people who were in here earlier about their uh, their roads out there, I I feel for them, I don't know what we can do, but I know we're gonna try to find a way to help them some that I don't think they understood. You know, that that place was set up for hunting camps, basically for people that hunted in the forest, I guess, and roads were never adopted, so we don't really have a whole lot we can do, but we're gonna try to do what we can. Um, and uh, I don't have anything else, I know we've got a couple things to discuss, maybe executive session, both, uh, uh, and multiple things, so uh, I need a motion to, uh.
Ballot termination.
Ballot termination. Moved by this Hutchins, and seconded by Mr. Gaines, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody.
We got a out on it.
They're not even calling it out, nobody's sleeping, we all in.